I'm now called to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November 19th at 6:30. Roll call?
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Slattery is absent in excuse. Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Terri Pannie.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Tonight's event occasion will be given by Reverend Bob Russell from the Family of Faith Church. Will everyone stand, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, following?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come tonight in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, thanking you for the opportunity to present the needs of the people of Tarpon Springs. We ask for guidance and wisdom for each member of the city council and provide patience for those presenting their concerns and seeking answers. Father, we thank you for the privilege that living in a country allows us to govern ourselves, for the freedoms we enjoy protected by those who have served and given their lives in our armed forces. Tonight, I ask for a special blessing for those who are recovering from the devastating typhoon that struck the Philippines and those in Illinois that are recovering from the many tornadoes that struck that portion of the country. Give them the strength to endure the loss of loved ones and endurance to survive the results of these horrific storms. Please protect the responders who have traveled from around the world to help this small country as well as those in Illinois. O mighty God, as we enter the time of year that we celebrate the birth of your Son, Jesus Christ, it is a great time for many. Sadly, it is also a very difficult time for others. So many this year will need assistance to feed their families. Father God, we ask that you fill each and every organization that are feeding and helping those in need, enabling them to feed each and every person. Father, we further ask those that are feeling pain through a situation that has occurred in the past during the season, comfort their hearts, Father. We ask this in Jesus' name. And everybody says, amen.
We will now go to public comments on any item that would not be discussed this evening. State your name and address for the record.
Chris Roboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. On October 30th, I received a letter from Florida Capital Bank informing me that the bank branch would be closing. This will be a very devastating event for many elderly residents of Tarpon Springs as well as the employees, which I assumed would be given an opportunity for employment in that company, but no, apparently not. They will be unemployed. So I researched this, and there is something that can be done. I've been quite busy, so I don't know that I can take this on myself, so I offer it up to the community. You can contact the Office of the Comptroller of the Currency, Office of the Ombudsman, call 800-613-6743, and let them know that you would like this branch to stay open. This is known as the Community Reinvestment Act. It allows organizations to comment to the bank's federal regulator on the effect on the community. The regulator may intervene, or the community may be able to work out a CRA, which is the Community Reinvestment Act Agreement with the bank, so individuals and groups can submit written comments to the regulatory agency and discuss the adverse effect of the closing. So this is something that the community can do together to keep those people in their jobs and to keep that bank accessible to those that have their money there. Also, I investigated the possibility of creating a municipal bank. This is possible. San Francisco is looking into doing this themselves. So this could be a golden opportunity for the city, A, to contact the Office of the Comptroller of Currency and tell them that this would be devastating to our community, the closing of this branch. They don't have to do this. The least they could do is leave a special kiosk, ATM machine there for the elderly to use. This can be done, but it's going to take you to contact the bank, let them know that we would like to make this change. So the city can write a letter, but on top of that, we can investigate opening up our own municipal bank, a bank that would be run by the City of Tarpon Springs. The state of North Dakota already has a state bank, made that state hundreds of thousands of dollars. When other banks lost money during the crash, that state bank soared, made a lot of money. So this is a change that can take place. Again, contact the OCC, 800-613-6743 if you're interested in making this happen. You can also contact me, Chris Roboski, if you would like me to help. The other thing I'd like to announce is the loss of a great activist and friend of mine, Bill Reed, recently lost his life. Bill Reed is the reason why I started coming to these meetings and around the county. Wonderful environmental activist, peace advocate, friend of Lauren Westenberger, who we recently lost, and he will be greatly missed. There is talk of planting a tree in his honor at one of the parks that he helped create. Thank you.
Anita Protas, 901 Bay Shore Drive, Tarpon Springs. And on another sad note, the city has lost a great friend, a longtime employee in the city, Maureen Myers, passed away. She was Secretary for the Commission and Mayor for many, many years. Her husband, John, was Vice President of the Banks, one of the banks here in Tarpon, and she will be missed. And I think the Commission should know this, to send a letter of sympathy to the family. They gave a lot of time to this community, a lot of volunteer work for organizations, and she will be missed. She was a beautiful, beautiful lady and an asset to the Mayor and Commission's office.
Thank you. One announcement is that agenda item number 11, Resolution 2013, Day 62, Amendment Rules for Appointments to Advisory and Quasi-Judicial Boards, and application form will be deferred. Next, we'll have proclamation, and this is Farm City Week. This proclamation reads, "Whereas American farmers and ranchers help feed the world by producing a bounty of agricultural products, to do this they rely on essential partnerships with urban and suburban communities to supply, sell, and deliver finished products across the country and around the globe. And whereas rural and urban communities working together have built our nation's rich agricultural resources so that they contribute to the health and well-being of our country and to the strength of our economy. Whereas during Farm City Week, we recognize the importance of this cooperative network, agriculture employs more than 24 million workers, including farmers and ranchers and shippers and processors, marketers, retailers, truck drivers, inspectors, and others, who annually contribute more than 1.3 trillion to our gross domestic product. Whereas Farm City Week activities celebrate these vital urban, excuse me, rural urban partnerships, we commend them. Many Americans whose hard work and ingenuity reflect the true spirit of our nation. Whereas this week, as we gather with families and friends around the Thanksgiving table, it is fitting that we count among our many, among our blessings the Farm City partnerships that have done so much to improve the quality of our lives. Now therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim, November 22nd through the 28th, 2013, as Farm City Week." Next, we'll go to a presentation, and it's indeed a pleasure and a privilege to be able to give to Commissioner Banther a certificate of completion of training. And this is from the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials, and it's Certificate of Completion, October 11th through the 13th, 2013, Tampa, Florida, awarded to Commissioner David Banther, City of Tarpon Springs. And this shows that Commissioner Banther is always trying to learn how to be a better commissioner, so. Are there any other public comments on this item? Just comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, Tarpon Springs Police Department Homeless Outreach Program update. And Chief Cochran?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, Chief Cochran, Tarpon PD. We wanted to come before you tonight and just provide an update on some of our strategies, some of the things that we do with reference to our homeless population. And as most people know, this is a very complex social problem. So our philosophy has always been at the police department that when you have a problem like this, you can't be one-dimensional in your approach, you have to be multi-dimensional. So we utilize a bunch of different strategies to really kind of go at this problem, and we have a lot of partners in the audience. We have the Shepherd Center here, we have the business community here, and we have residents here. So I'm going to go through this PowerPoint with you, just again, to give you an update, go over some of the things that we do. And obviously, we'll entertain any questions that you may have. And I know Commissioner Banther wanted Shepherd Center to say a few words, so I'll go ahead and start. The first slide deals with, we pretty much all know what the main factors that cause homelessness in the United States. High cost and shortage of housing, poverty, joblessness, lack of education, mental illness, drug and/or alcohol abuse, domestic violence. This really affects mainly women and children. We see it a lot in law enforcement. It's actually very sad. Limited access to health care, lack of community support, family, churches, et cetera. The next slide, this is a homeless camp that's in the unincorporated area, what we call Zone 2 in the police department. It's off of Altarant 19 by Rainville Road. Our homeless outreach officer visits this camp several times a week. We have a lot of homeless people that will obviously sleep here. We've closed down some of the camps. We've had several. We've worked with the owners to basically shut them down, and then they move elsewhere. What you're going to see in camps such as these, these are the chronic homeless that we're dealing with. These are the people that you're usually going to see downtown or at the sponge docks or other areas in the community that are panhandling and a lot of times causing problems. I would have to estimate that they comprise probably about 2.5% to 5% of the homeless population. Some of the homeless counts, and you have to kind of take these numbers for what they're worth, because they're probably actually a lot higher. These counts, as you go from 2007 to 2013, is in Pasco and Pinellas. You can see they pretty much remained about the same, but these homeless counts utilize a very narrow definition of what is considered homelessness. A lot of experts in this area say that the actual number of homelessness is a lot higher than what you see in here. Based on the causes of homelessness, traditional methods of law enforcement, and some people don't like to hear this, meaning arrest and prosecution utilized as a one-dimensional approach, have a limited effect on impacting the problem of homelessness. This is a part of our strategy, but it's not the whole strategy. And if you don't incorporate a multi-dimensional approach, you're not near as effective. Because basically, when you take a chronic homeless person off the street for an ordinance, a state law violation, a misdemeanor, they go down to the county jail, they get a meal, they go before a judge, they give them time to serve, and they come right back to Tarpon Springs. A lot of the times, it's a 24-hour turnaround, right back on the street. So my saying is, you can't arrest your way out of a homeless problem. And I stand by that statement. We've seen it for a long time in law enforcement, but it is a part of our strategy, and as we go through the presentation, we'll show you that. The problem of homelessness is way above any police agency's ability to handle alone. A lot of people look at the police department and say, what are you going to do about this? And this is such a complex social problem that we cannot solve it alone. There has to be many partners involved, and there has to be a lot of resources thrown at this to really begin to tackle this problem. So therefore, as I've stated, we use real and broad strategies to address the problem of homelessness in Tarpon Springs, and I'll go over some of those strategies. Really, the centerpiece of what we do is our homeless outreach program. Officer Yurgules is here tonight with Captain Templeton, oversees operations. Basically, what we do is we're connecting homeless persons with social services. Social services plays a key role in tackling this problem. The Shepherd Center is one of our biggest partners in this area. We also work with homeless leadership board and other agencies within Pinellas. But this program, this officer, really has this innate ability to connect with homeless people. And since 2010, he's taken over 200 homeless people off the streets, not to jail, but to programs that address, you know, the main cause for homelessness, which I'll get into. We all know it's alcohol, drugs, mental illness, those are the biggies. But this program has been very successful. I often wonder, if we didn't get those 200 people off the street, how many people would actually be here? That's something you can't see, but it's very effective. Officer Yurgules, he also, he has offices at the Shepherd Center. We just set up an office for him at Tarpon Springs Library. As we all know, we've been experiencing a larger problem with homeless persons congregating at the library, so he has an office there. And his program has really, really been very successful. He's very awesome at what he does. This is Officer Yurgules. This is one of the homeless camps that we talked about off Old Dixie Highway. Again, it's about going in there, connecting with these people. And when you're dealing with the chronic homeless, it's really hard to get them off the street and into programs that are going to address the real reasons why they're on the street. But every day, he chips away at it and chips away at it. And he's just been very successful. So this centerpiece of our strategies is the most effective way to deal with our homeless issue. Our second, our second strategy, and these are not in any order, I'm just, I'm just going through them. We have a crime prevention officer that's dedicated solely to crime prevention. And what we do is we've established a business watch program, and we have over about 250 businesses that are involved in this program. And we'll send out notifications to them, we'll work with them, we'll go to the meetings with them. And one of the, one of the programs that we have is called the trespass warning program. And we constantly tell business people, if you have chronic homeless people that are disrupting your business or causing problems, you call us, and we will give them a trespass warning. Because the bottom line is, we really don't want to utilize any enabling strategies with the chronic homeless. We want them to get right into the hands of the homeless outreach officer and go get help for whatever their problem is. But we also have to hold them accountable, and we do. But the trespass warning for the businesses is one way that they can pretty much move off. And again, we're kind of playing a show game here. They'll move off to another business, and then we'll go there and wish them a trespass warning. But again, it's just one of the methods that we can help our businesses with, trying to keep some of the chronic homeless, the undesirable ones, away from their business. The other thing we've been really picking up on is our foot patrols in the downtown and the dock area. You know, one of the core essentials of community policing is to basically partner with the community, especially your business community, in this sense, and problem solve. Find out what's going on. Are they having problems? Working with the crime prevention officer to, you know, we'll come out, we'll do surveys for businesses. Another thing we're going to really start gearing up, and we just purchased another one out of forfeiture funds in FY 2014, is a T3. Most of you have probably seen them at the events. Goes about 20 miles an hour. It's an electronic vehicle. You can get in alleyways with it, up sidewalks, you know, you can really get to a lot of areas, and you can cover a lot of ground with it. So we're going to be basically implementing those types of patrols in the downtown and dock area for more of a visible presence. We also do directed patrolling. Our officers really, you know, we try and have them ride through the business areas, ride through the alleys, down at the docks, you know, just to keep that presence and to keep a watch on what's going on. Enforcement, that is another part of our strategy. And again, the main reason we do it is for public safety, number one. But again, we don't really want to utilize any enabling strategies, especially with the chronic homeless. We will hold them accountable for panhandling. We will hold them accountable for solicitation. We will hold them accountable for open alcohol. We will enforce state law when they violate it, and we will enforce our trespassing statutes because they have to be held accountable, just like any other normal citizen. And the goal here is, if they keep on getting arrested, the homeless outreach officer keeps chipping away, you need to get off the street, you need to go to help for your problem and/or addiction. We also have the Marchman Act. That's for people, if they're inebriate or intoxicated, they've lost control of their faculties, we'll take them into protective custody. It's not a solution, but it gets them off the street. We also have the Baker Act for mental illness. That is also utilized to deal with those that need that kind of help. Again, with homeless people, the main causes, we're dealing with mental illness, alcohol abuse, substance abuse. Those are the three biggies right there. I mean, there are other causes, but those are the three biggies that keep at least the chronic homeless on the street. The biggie here is partnerships, because like I said, the police department, everyone expects us to solve this problem. That can't happen alone. We have to work with people. We have to bring resources to bear. We have to engage in partnerships. If we don't utilize this comprehensive strategy, we'll be so ineffective. If people think we're just going to go out there and arrest people all day long, they're back on the street before we get back to, you know, back to the city. By itself, it's not effective. But when you bring all this together, the impact is huge. Our partnerships, we work with the Shepherd Center. Obviously, we work with city government. We work with other government entities. We work with Peace for Tarpon. We work with our churches. Pinellas Safe Harbor, I know the city provides funding for that. That's a, that's a really good facility that we can bring some of the homeless people to, to get them off the streets. We have good partnerships with the homeless county, Pinellas County Homeless Leadership Board. I know Commissioner Larson sits on the HLB. I sit on the HLB Funders Council, and we also provide funding to the, to the HLB, and that's the Homeless Leadership Board. So, you know, as we move forward, this is a picture of our homeless outreach officer working with a social worker at the Shepherd Center. And I'm a big believer that social services play such a huge role in this because, again, when you're dealing with the chronic homeless, they're there because of a mental illness, drug and/or alcohol abuse, substance abuse, and, and they're going to stay on the street, and if we enable them, it's going to get worse. So we really got to hold them accountable, but yet gear them towards these services that can get them help to hopefully, you know, move them in a more positive direction in life. Moving forward, I can tell you and tell the community, we have been experiencing a problem with the chronic homeless people down at the library, downtown, at the sponge docks to a degree. We believe that our population is increasing. Our homeless outreach officer pretty much has confirmed that to me. He knows pretty much all of them in the city. So we have to work out much harder to try and get them off the street, get them into programs, or hold them accountable if they don't want to work with us to get help. Our arrests have increased in this area, especially with open alcohol. We have a lot of problems at Craig Park. We've been making a lot more arrests for trespass after warning, especially at businesses or the library. But once again, when we make these arrests, they go down and they come right back. So we got to keep going at it, you know, but we have to hold people accountable. You can't use enabling strategies. The goal is to get them off the street, to get them help. So we're always looking for new ideas. We're always looking for new partnerships, and we're always looking to work, you know, together with everyone. But if everyone, if anyone here thinks that we could do it alone, they're wrong. We need partnerships. We need resources, and I think we're moving in the right direction. And I think we've made a huge impact that you really can't see with those 200 people that we've actually gotten into programs that will get them, you know, help in the areas that they need help in. So with that, I know we have people from the Shepherd Center. We have the business community here. If you have any questions of me or my staff, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
I don't have any questions, but I just thank you, Chief, for the update in terms of what you're doing from a proactive perspective as for as homelessness is concerned. I don't know if anybody has any questions for Chief before I go and ask the Shepherd Center if they want to have something to say.
I do, but I can wait until after if there's going to be additional speakers.
Something you want to say there, Mr.?
Good evening. Thank you for your time. It's a pleasure to be here today to kind of have a few minutes to speak about the good work that we're doing at Shepherd Center. First, I'd just like to thank you. The Shepherd Center recently was made aware that we'll be the recipients of a food drive by the, by the City of Tarpon, and that's really a blessing for us. It'll help our Project Thanks program, which we will give out about 1,000 turkeys in Thanksgiving, 1,000 turkeys during the Christmas season. So really, just wanted, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for, for that food drive. I'm Michael Herb. He's like a director for the Shepherd Center. And just like the chief said, this is a complex issue that involves partnerships from many individuals throughout our community. It's a community issue, and we're part of that community, and we look to stand together with the city and with the chief of police as we move forward to try to address these concerns. Speaking specifically to our partnership and relationship with the chief, and specifically to Officer Yurgules, a classic example of the cases we usually handle, handle with Officer Yurgules, who's extremely adept at working with families and individuals who are at risk, and that's how we kind of term that. Last week, we had a family that came in, limited speaking skills as far as English, not a strong command of the language, but it was a husband, wife, 12-year-old child, and a pregnant mom, who had just recently had been evicted from, from their home here in our, in our, in our community. Father was working, but they were classified homeless, had no place to go. Through the intervention of St. Timothy's and Officer Yurgules and, and the Shepherd Center, we were able to put them up in a hotel for a few days, and then find them some more permanent housing with, closer to the father's work. And that by far is the majority of cases that we work together with Officer Yurgules and the chief. Cases like that that involve individuals and families that are at need. And that's where we're kind of heading towards as our mission for the Shepherd Center, is to work with that single mother, with that family that's kind of in transition. And that's what we're looking to do. Overall, as you know, we have a food pantry that we average serving anywhere from 500 to 600 families a month. And that's a pretty large number. Those, the majority of those individuals, again, are families with children, single mothers, at-risk families, and so on and so forth. So the bulk of that number that comes in our food pantry are people that are in need, not necessarily chronically homeless. So we have a very wide range of services that we offer individuals. And we're looking to expand those services to help meet the needs of individuals. Once again, we're looking to partner with, continue our partnership with the city and other organizations to really, you know, address these issues. And what I'm basically here to say is that we're here to help, and we're here to really be at the front line with you all. So, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Did you have any questions? Want to go ahead and open up to any public comment?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Thank you. Chief, and actually, first, let me just say thank you both to the police department, to the Shepherd Center, our network of churches that provide so many resources to our homeless community. We're really very fortunate to live in such a generous community that does such a good job of taking, trying to take care of those that are less fortunate. I did have a couple of questions from the presentation. One thing I wanted to comment on, first of all, I was excited to hear about the office that's set up at the library. I think that's a very positive thing. I've heard just kind of anecdotally that there have been issues where people aren't always feeling safe as they enter the library or exit the library with some aggressive pain handling. So I think that's a positive thing to increase presence there. And I heard mention of increasing foot patrolling, and I think that's a positive thing as well. I'm wondering, do, are we actively patrolling the trail, either with the T3 vehicle, maybe that's not allowed on the trail actually, but are we actively patrolling the trail bicycle or with foot patrolling?
Yeah, we're, the trail cuts right through the center of our town. So yes, we're on the trail. The T3, it's a police vehicle. It can go down the trail. We'll try not to break the speed limit. But, but yes, but again, most of, most of them are congregating to where they're getting fed downtown, the alleyways. We're getting some of it down at the docks, Craig Park, library.
Okay. It was mentioned that 200 individuals since the year 2010 have been taken off the streets, which is obviously a positive thing. How many of those, if you know, have been taken to Safe Harbor? As you mentioned in the presentation, our city contributes to the Safe Harbor shelter. And through my experience on the homeless leadership board, I'm aware of some of the services that they provide that would hopefully keep those people off of the streets to get them the services that they need. Are we, are some of those 200 taken to that shelter?
Yeah. First of all, 200 is huge. And yes, we, he utilizes Safe Harbor. You know, we have, we have a bunch of different facilities throughout Pinellas County. Some are for alcohol abuse, some are for mental health issues, and he knows exactly which one to go to. But yes, Safe Harbor has been utilized.
Do you have any idea how many have gone to Safe Harbor?
I'll have, I'll have Jose come up and address it. You can tell us about it.
Safe Harbor is open 24/7, seven days a week. So that's the easiest one when we have somebody that really needs to go into somewhere. that really needs to go into somewhere. I would say probably about 70 out of those 200, and we're up to like 240 right now, but probably about 70, about one-third have gone.
Up to 240, is that what you said?
Yeah, the number's gone up to about 240 since those numbers, the last time we had the presentation earlier this year. But I would say most of them have gone to Safe Harbor, and the next biggest one would be Pinellas Hope. And then recently, I've been going a lot to Churning Point, that's the substance abuse homeless shelter in St. Pete, so.
With the number of 240, are those 240 unique individuals, like these are not like repeat people that you end up taking multiple times?
Some are repeats, I'll put somebody in a shelter, and then a year later, they show up again, for some reason, they failed their first attempt, and might try a different shelter, or maybe try to get them into the same shelter. Sometimes they won't accept them back in the same shelter, if they were, for disciplinary reasons, they were rejected, but I try to get them back in. It's up to the shelters what their policies are, some are more strict than others, I can only do what they say, but I have put other ones back in, repeats.
Thank you for what you're doing.
You're welcome, sir.
Chief, you mentioned that it's a complicated and a complex issue, and I agree completely. As a teacher, I interact with students that are homeless, and so when we think of the face of homelessness, it isn't always, you know, an aggressive panhandler, I mean, there's so many different aspects of homelessness. But I do think it's important that we continue to, I guess, increase the patrolling if possible in the areas that you mentioned, I think it was on the last slide or near the last slide, where there seems to be increased activity. Again, I think there are some business owners that are making the comment that they feel that some of their customers don't always feel that they're safe in some of these situations, so as we look at the library, the trail, downtown, sponge docks, the more that we can increase presence, hopefully that can reduce the number of arrests that need to be made, as you mentioned, being proactive. But I thank you for everything you're doing, again, our generous Shepherd Center and the churches, I think there's a lot happening in the community that's very positive, thank you.
You mentioned the schools, first of all, Jose is awesome, I can't speak highly enough about this officer and the impact he's had on the community, but you know Tariq Mathis, our SRO of the Year for, I think it was 2011, he's actually started kind of an informal program at the high school, he's starting to identify homeless kids and trying to work with them and connect them with services, so we really try and think outside of the box, and we realize that social services is the key, if we can do that, so, thank you.
Commissioner, can I talk to you?
Thank you. Chief, I wanna thank you initially for doing this presentation and coming before us tonight and giving it. I certainly concur with Commissioner Larson in the sense that I think increasing our presence in the troubled areas is a positive, and also enforcing some of the codes that we have in place. You said repeatedly that you think the biggest positive that we're doing to try and deal with this homeless situation that we have is the homeless outreach officer, Mr. Yorgules, and I understand that there's a trade-off with every situation, whether, you know, he's assigned to this specifically, or if he's assigned to other police work, so my question is this, are we at a point where it's time to look at a second homeless outreach officer?
I think effectively, it takes a special person to do what he does, it takes a lot of training. We are right now working on possibly bringing on a second person to work with him to a degree, to start molding that person, because eventually Jose will retire, so as you look down the road, we do want another officer to basically fill those big shoes, but I would say right now, for all that we're doing with our homeless outreach officer, with all the strategies that you see here, we're putting tons of resources into this, and I think we're pretty good with what we have. What I'd like to expand is the partnerships, especially with the business community, business community's really stepped up, but you know, especially going to the meetings, working with the crime prevention officer, utilizing that trespass authorization program, and anyone in the audience, if you have a problem with a homeless person, call us, call the police department, not be afraid to pick up the phone and call us, that's what we do. So, I would say we're good for now, I'd like to increase the partnerships and more people, you know, taking an active role in trying to work with us. It has gotten a lot better, but I think that's the area we need to focus on.
Thank you.
I wanna thank both the Shepherd Center and the police for all that you're doing. Nobody can say in Tarpon that we don't help the homeless or do things for them, especially in our community to the north or south of us, we do far more than they do. How many would you say homeless were, that are arrested on average each month in Tarpon Springs?
I don't have those stats with me, but we make a lot of arrests, I mean, we hold them accountable, like I said, for trespassing after warning, open alcohol, we have a problem at Craig Park, especially with the open alcohol, we started making a lot of arrests there, we've arrested several at the library for panhandling and trespass after warning. I just don't have that stats with me, but we do make arrests, I mean, that is a part of our strategy, and quite simply, they're not different than any other citizen, they have to be held accountable.
Exactly. And you mentioned, I think, in the, when the present, 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 presentation, that if they're congregating on like vacant lots or something, the property owner can be notified and stuff, if it's like a chronic camp, correct?
Yeah, we had a couple, Jose had a couple down at Mears and Altar 19, and we worked with the owners, and we got them out of there. We're proactive with that, the problem is they go somewhere else, and then you gotta figure out where else are they gonna go, are they gonna go closer to downtown, are they gonna go to the homeless camps up off of Altar 19, but we do work proactively to try and close down the camps, because again, you wanna hold them accountable, you don't want to enable them, you want them to get out of the camps and get into programs that will help them.
Because I think when we talk about the problem, at least, the phone calls that I get are from business owners, of course.
Right.
They have the issues with their stores and their property, and I share with you the issue we have at our business as well. And I think we need to define, when we talk about the problem, it's not what you mentioned, the family coming in with a 12-year-old son, that's the problem with panhandling and the end crime. That's what I would call a homeless person. I think what we need to identify with people that maybe do not wanna get off the streets for whatever reasons they have, I'm not sure, as vagrants people, and kinda narrow down on that, and I think when I was in the meeting at the police, you said that there's about 20 to 30 that would come, that are the troublemakers?
Talking about the chronic homeless?
Yeah.
Jose knows every one of them.
Yeah.
Knows their names, knows what camp they stay at, and when I say every one of them, pretty much every one of them. But our problem, the problem that you're seeing downtown is the chronic homeless, the panhandlers living on the street, pushing and shopping cars.
And they know how to get help, correct? I mean, there's not, I mean, what more can you all do, right? So, that's what I think, when we talk about the problem, I kinda wanna, the problem meaning when business owners are having issues with their property or property owners, that we keep it focused on that and not try and just dump in all the homeless people, the ones that are down on their luck and wanna get help. And that, I think it's excellent what you're doing with the trespass warning, the business inspections, and really make that aware to business owners, especially new ones, I'm sure I found already the Chamber should have packets that they can give out to new business folks that come into town, so they're aware of what tools they have to help fight, you know, vagrants, if you will, that are chronically bothering their customers or their property. But my only main concern overall in the city, as far as if we move past the business community, is the library, my grandma volunteers there, and I hadn't been there quite some time, and there's a book I wanted, I went to go check it out, and it was a whole different population in the library than when I last went there. And I, you know, was kinda hesitant for my grandmother, though there's not really, we had that one incident the way, a few years ago, the library's on a high crime area, but I was hesitant to have her volunteer there with, you know, what I saw, especially that has been mentioned, you know, outside with the panhandling. Is that situation, is there like a plan in place for that? I know you can't just kick people out of the library, they have the right to be there, so I don't know if the officer wants to.
The plan in place is, we basically have an office for Jose out of the library, we, I direct patrol that, I mean, we're there all the time. Obviously, even the chronic homeless people, they have constitutional rights to walk in the library, as long as they're not panhandling, committing a crime, or disturbing people. My philosophy, and we work very closely with Kathy Monahan, the library director, my philosophy on that is, I would much prefer, unless they're outside and are obviously panhandling, I would much prefer for her staff to decide, because it's a library, whether or not they think someone's undesirable for that library, I really don't want the police department deciding who can go in a library and who can't, unless they commit a major crime, or they're obviously panhandling out front. But we are, we are working that problem, but please understand, if you've got homeless people sitting on the bench and are not committing a crime, they have a right to sit there just like anybody else does.
All right, well, I thank you for what you all do in the police department, I don't think there's much more you could do, but like Commissioner Tarepani said, if it comes to that place where you need additional resources for homeless outreach and help of the community, I hope that you're vocal to us for that.
I think right now, the biggest thing, and I wanna talk to the business community, we have a crime prevention officer, we have an active business watch program, we notify all the businesses about this program, we go to the meetings, we have 250 members, we renew that every year, we need more businesses to be involved in that, we need more businesses to partner with us, learn about the trespass authorization program, and learn about what we do, so we can partner, and we can basically try and help them with the homeless people, but they gotta meet us halfway.
Exactly.
I mean, we're trying.
Yeah, no, exactly.
So, I would really like to see much more membership out of the business community, I think that will have a great impact, especially with the trespass authorization program, that's big.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any public comments inside?
Good evening, my name's David Bolton, I'm at 508 North Gross Avenue, Tarpon Springs. I purchased my current home specifically for the location, walkability of the area, closeness to restaurants downtown, and places of worship. Now, the very lifestyle that I hoped to live and have in this home has been threatened. My wife and son cannot feel safe walking the streets, our yard that should be a haven has now become a fortress in order to feel safe in my own town. The frequent news stories are not good, and all too frequently are highlighting our city in a negative light. Please don't paint me with the same brush that others are painted with just because they have the guts to speak up, I'm not cold-hearted or uncaring for those in our community that find themselves in difficult circumstances and in need of a good Samaritan. Many times when someone speaks about homeless issues, advocates are quick to spout statistics of homeless children or families. Be certain, my issue is not with those citizens, my issue is with that 5%, the homeless that our city, that are homeless by choice, the chronic homeless. They never lived here, worked here, paid a tax here, even volunteered, they have chosen our city simply because it's comfortable, free meals every day, clothing, sometimes shelter, a little to no resistance for the lifestyle they've chosen. They sleep on our city property or behind the buildings downtown, they litter the streets with trash, drug and liquor paraphernalia, and urinate as well as defecate wherever they feel like it. They stalk residents and patrons of our businesses, panhandling or creating an uneasiness that causes people to avoid our town. Personally, I've had two clients purchase homes and locations other than Tarpon Springs after they spent time here. Their comments were that they had no idea how overrun the city was with homeless and what appeared to be drug activity. Right or wrong, perception is reality. And I wanna thank those that participated in our meeting a couple weeks ago discussing the area surrounding this problem, Shepherd Center and police, and commissioners and other business people. As I stated then, then, I'm a taxpayer paying Tarpon Springs, and I have an expectation that the city commission and police will do the work, will work hand-in-hand with volunteers and other residents like myself that are willing to be a part of the solution to create a safe community for me to live in and to do business in, this is your job. I'm not interested in excuses as to why you can't ask for IDs, or how implementing certain safeguards may jeopardize funding. Your first responsibility is to me and the taxpayers of this community, not to those that have decided to overrun our city just because we have a generous heart. This is not the hot topic of the day that goes away after a while, as you know, you guys are implementing great things, and we've talked about that, and I really appreciate a lot that's being done, but it's just the beginning. This is a real topic, and you can be certain it'll be the center topic of the election to come. I wanna thank the Shepherd Center and Tarpon Springs Police for their efforts and willingness to entertain ideas, not only to move those people along, but to get them help. As we know, a help-up would be the best solution for all these individuals, however, a help-up rejected should mean that we're helping to move them along. Thank you for your time.
You know, the public comments, you know, I say this and that, and I did say I thank you for what the police officers are doing, and it is a partnership, it's a partnership not only with the business community, but the entire community. And one of the things is, and I can understand where individuals are at, I understand Mr. Bolton and the statements that's made, but what we understand too is that there are laws, and you just can't just by virtue of looking at someone and say that therefore you are not wanted. That's not to say that, hey, we shouldn't continue, excuse me, Mr. Bolton, you know, I allowed you to talk, okay? I didn't say you said, I said that just by virtue, this is me talking now, just by virtue of where somebody looks or the rest of it, the police department have certain things that they need to do. Chief knows that I would talk to him in terms of him and the rest of the officers being vigilant in terms of individuals breaking the law, period. Homeless are not homeless, they are laws, we expect that they're gonna obey the laws, but also, we understand that we want the public to understand that there are some situations that prevent some things happening. And now, we can go and we can start talking to the Shepherd Center and say, hey, don't feed nobody no more, don't do anything of that nature, let's stop those types of things, and that's something that the greater public wants to have done, maybe that's something that can be initiated. Some might think that's heartless, some might think that's wise, but what I'm saying is that we need to continually work together, period. We need to work with the police department, from the business community, trespassing, warrants, those type of things are very important to try to get that done. If we see the homeless in a certain place, that we feel like, hey, they're being threatening towards people, we need to work with the police department, and I welcome anybody. If you think that chief coaching or any of the officers are not doing what they need to do, please call me. I get enough calls about other things that I don't even think that's half as important as what you're talking about. And one of the things that I want everyone to know is that we take what's being said seriously, and we would do whatever we can to make sure that Tarpon is the type of community that all of us are proud to live in. So, I just wanted to make that clear as to where I sit, because I do think that we're doing a lot of things that's proactive, that doesn't mean that there are more things that can be done, more things that we would try to do, but we need everyone's help in terms of trying to get that done, so. With that, we'll look at going to item number four, which is Saford, Live Oak Emergency Utility Line Repair Update.
Good evening, Tom Funchen, Public Works Director, I'm just here to give you an update on the status of the Live Oak and Saford Avenue sewer repairs. A quick little summary of what had happened, back in August 17th, we were called in for a sewer backup, we had a restaurant or home that had a backup, and we reported it as, and addressed it as we usually do. During that event, we actually had a, we believed at the time, a pipe failure at the intersection of Saford and Live Oak, and we reacted to that and closed that section of roadway. Since that point over there, we had a second failure in the roadway, by the time we believed it was a manhole collapse, but because of the nature of the situation, there's about 2.5 million gallons of raw sewage runs through that intersection, it's not a simple little repair or dig down a couple of feet and make a repair. We had to make some bypasses to bypass the flows in order to investigate exactly what was going on. I can give you more detail on that later on, it's pretty complicated when we get into the bypass, especially when you're dealing with two-plus million gallons a day. But that fact, the job has turned into a little bit larger than could possibly be anticipated. Right now, we have completed one section of pipe in the ground at Saford, excuse me, at Live Oak, and some additional work will need to be done, but the rest of the repair work from Live Oak up to, it's gonna end up at the treatment plant, by the time we're completed doing that, getting through the spaghetti of the type of utilities in the ground, and also at the depths, we're not looking at a completion until sometime, probably the middle of January at the earliest. probably the middle of January at the earliest. It's hard to explain exactly what the cause was. I can get into those details, we're still doing some investigation. It's kind of an odd situation here, it's something I've run into before, but not quite on this scale. The cost of this project is probably going to be about $1.2 million in that area. There are, the other small benefits to it, and we will be increasing the capacity of that situ, of the area. So, one, one benefit is that there will be better capacity in the system. When it is completed, it, it'll be an operation long after I'm gone, which I hope is a long time yet. I'm open to any questions, I can fill in some more details if you need them.
Do you want to have any questions for Mr. Funtz?
Well, it might be for City Manager. Not to be, just an upfront question, but the funding for this, where's that going to come from exactly? We did an obviously budget for something of that magnitude.
No, the money, the good news is the money will be available within the sewer fund. The bad news is probably when we go for our new rate study next year, it's going to have a profound effect, and because of that, I can almost bet that there's going to have to be a raise in that, or there's going to be suggested a raise in that, because obviously a $1.2 million hit of something that's not planned, not only stalls future projects that we do have planned, but it's probably going to necessitate a rate increase down the road, but, you know, we won't be dealing with that till probably this coming summer and stuff, but that's going to be the downward. But while we have the money to pay it now, to do future projects, and, you know, we've got some infrastructure that's very old, so to prepare for that in a situation like that, you know, some people wondering why you have a large amount of money in those accounts sitting there, and they're paying what you do. There's the perfect reason, because all of a sudden, out of blue, not budgeted, you've got to do a million dollars to correct your major lines that were 30 or more years old going into the sewer plant. So, that's probably what's going to happen in the future. Obviously, the rate study will be done, and that'll tell, but that's probably the future ramifications of this.
And I'm sorry if I missed it, when's the ETA on completion? The best you can tell, obviously.
At this present time, mid-January.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Funtz, I know you said that it's kind of complex on what exactly happened, but I know there's some people in the audience specifically here for this update, so could you, could you try and give your best brief scenario on how this happened, why it happened, and how it got worse, et cetera?
Sure. Why it happened? The system really, in, in all terms, is not as old as most, most of the city, I have areas in the city here 60-plus years old of pipe. This actually, pipe was actually installed in approximately '86, '87. For a sewer system, it's like having a car with 35,000 miles on it, you don't expect the motor to go. But in this case over here, was the, actually, the material used failed for a number of reasons. One is that 14 feet deep, with a lot of water intrusion, which actually has an extremely negative effect on the condition and the corrosion factors of the pipe. Number two, in a forced main, sewer main, it's a very highly corrosive environment, as we all would probably assume. It was, it was a ductile iron pipe. There's two types of class of ductile iron pipe, to make as simple as I can, one is for water line, one is for sewer lines. The pipe that was installed was not for sewer lines, it was for water lines, it was a, what they call cement line pipe. Under a forced main in those corrosive conditions, it actually corroded from the inside out. The failures were both on the pipe. The second failure, first failure was a, what we assumed originally, we thought was at a connection just outside of a manhole. It failed near that connection, but it was actually the pipe itself, not the connection. The second one, we had thought was the manhole, and that's why we had to rearrange our, our bypass. When we dug down alongside the manhole and discovered it was the pipe that failed, we tried to work our way back a couple of feet to make a connection, to connect that bypass in, but the pipe was in such poor condition that we ended up going about 60 feet and still couldn't find another, another pipe to connect to. We ended up having to go 300 feet down before we actually found a piece of pipe that was structurally strong enough to tie our bypass into. The bypass is another issue again, with 2.5 million gallons of fluid going through that intersection today. Not only do we have to make a bypass connection, we also have to make sure that the bypass can handle that volume, so we had to make some other changes throughout the city to try to readdress some flows, to take as much strain off of that bypass, because the last thing I can afford to do is having a sewer spill pumping down Live Oak. We'd be getting an awful lot of phone calls, that's for sure. After that, during that bypass, we had, we knew we had to replace that forced main from the, about 300 feet down from the second failure, so while we were making the arrangements to bypass some of the forced mains and the other parts of the section of the city, we installed that, that forced main, the new forced main, in that area. At 14 feet deep, there's a lot of challenges. There's a 20-inch water line that runs alongside of it, there's another gravity sewer that runs to the south of it, there's a 6-inch high-pressure gas main that runs alongside there, there's an 8-inch main, and this is all at 14 feet deep, including three storm structures that cross Live Oak. It's a slow, meticulous process, and it's got to be done right, of course. And that's why it's taken so long. When we got up to, we got the, most of that in, we were attempting to make a connection off of Live Oak up Safford, the short ways, so we can reestablish Live Oak and maybe get it operational again, but the pipe from that section over there was in such bad shape that it was impossible to make a, make a connection, even emergency connection would not fail, would not, would not work, so we had no choice but to go all the way back to the treatment plant and replace the pipe from that point there. That's where we stand right now.
Thank you.
Any other public comments on this item?
Christopher Bosky, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. Mr. Funtz mentioned that there was a material used that failed. Have you done an inventory to see how many other pipes may have been installed with that same material, so that we can nip this thing in the bud, predict when other pipes might fail throughout the city? Also, how often are we inspecting pipes in general to make sure that we can save this $1.2 million from happening again? Can we up, up the ante now? Can we now start to inspect more regularly? And of course, any of those pipes that were installed with the same material need to be questioned. I mean, if obviously that one failed in 16 years, and these generally last more than 30, there's a problem there, and I believe that needs to be addressed. Not to mention the potential of sinkholes, like what happened in Dunedin. Can we do a study to make sure that the water that will be drained by our new RO plant, can we do seismic studies of the, where these pipes lay, to make sure that they're not going to collapse if there is a void underneath them? I think this needs to be studied in depth, to save us money, and will this also impact the rate at which we get people to jump onboard, leaving their septic tanks to sewer? Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I can, I can answer that, if you'd like me to.
Yes, sir.
Sure, no problem. There is inventory in the city. We have a very in-depth study, we do cleaning, videotaping, relining of pipes throughout the city. Some of the older pipes, I said I have pipes in here 60 years old, they're in very good condition, and we do inspections consistently, actually have multiple videos. But like any other inspection, you work from your oldest pipe forward. A pipe that's at 27 years old is not usually a candidate for replacement or even inspection. The other thing is, this is a major line in the city. In order to do inspection on this type of pipe, means you're going to have to shut, you have to cut off service for certain areas, it's, it gets very in-depth. There are other ways of doing it, but again, as a, a pipe at this age, you don't expect it. As far as the inventory of pipe, we do have inventory of pipe, there's multiple different site plans, we looked at this, at this pipe. When it first failed, we had some proposals, some ASBILts on the pipe, we did look at those, those things first, we always look at those things first. When we have a break, we carry a map with us on all sites. There was conflicting reports on this, whether this was cast, ductile iron pipe, which what the failure is, whether it was RCP reinforced concrete pipe, was PVC. Unfortunately, that happens fairly often, sometimes the proposed plans don't always meet the actual ASBILts. Sometimes it's a simple mistake, and an operator may identify the wrong type of pipe. Sometimes when you're in a ground, you know, 15, 16 feet deep, and you've got a camera in there, it's hard to determine exactly what the pipes are. But no, we do have a very intensive inspection system, I have videotapes, I have recordings, we keep a file onto it. This just happened to be one of those cases that even, even the most up-to-date, most modern city is going to fall into these situations. It's unfortunate, it's expensive, but we're doing our best, we maintain the cost, you know, incorporate the cost the best we can, and I believe, I truly believe that when the system is done and repaired, it'll be above and beyond what was in the ground before. I am not concerned, sinkholes are a different issue, that's another reason why it takes long to get this, the repairs done, because when you put this back, you need to put it back. Compacted soils, we do compaction testing, we do pressure testing, all these lines go in, getting pressure tested, the soils get compacted with soil samples, so we're following this thing, every procedure by the book.
Thank you for the update. We'll now go to our consent agenda. Attorney fees, Frasier Hubbard Branch, Travis Yakovoe Metz, Dana L.L.P. invoice number 43938. B. S. Lewis, Longman and Walker, P.A. invoice 96505. Zenzal Law, invoice 13231. We have special events, annual Christmas parade, December 14, 2013. Epiphany, St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Cathedral, January 6, 2014. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Marching Event, January 18, 2014. Any items? Anyone have, any public comments on these items? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next, we go to special consent agenda. Item number seven, award file number 140004C, D.A.'s DM's Splash Park Through the U.S. Communities Purchasing Alliance Master Agreement number 11012179.
Just let me give a brief background before Mr. Jack is to box and introduce our guest here. Obviously, the condensed version is, we've been talking for 10 or 15 years of this commission about the corridor and the linking of the downtown to the docks. We've embarked on several big projects, our DOT projects on Tarpon Avenue, Alter 19. We're at the completion of our North Safford project, we'll be beginning our Sponge Docks project soon. This element of the splash park is the, the end of the Live Oak, Safford Avenue project with is the hub. As you know, we've already opened a fitness park, a fitness park, along with bike amenities, the importance of Keystone Road going through, and if you watch the trail now, the tremendous amount of traffic coming from the East Lake area that's coming into the town, that park acts as a gateway, right there, Live Oak and Safford, is really the gateway to go straight to the Sponge Docks and left to downtown. We've also put back a dog park where we originally promised, when I first became city manager, that we restore it and add some amenities to a park, but as we do in Tarpon, we decided to make it as good a park as possible, and a dog park that would be the envy of the area, and I think we completed that. We'll also be doing in-house boat and kayak launch, and then the, the, one of the centerpieces for this area is what's going to be presented now, and it's a splash park. And this splash park is something that is going to bring families to town, it's something, for probably three years everywhere I've went out of town, I've looked at their splash parks, knowing that this would be one of the elements along with the fitness and bike trail, with the dog lovers and this, that would be something to attract people and bring them as a gateway. And seeing these places and going to places as close as Dunedin, and places Daytona Beach and all over, again, when we were designing this splash park, we wanted two things in mind. First of all, with my friendly competition with the Dunedin city manager, I told them, "I want to have people from Dunedin bypass your splash park and come to our splash park in Tarpon." So, that's one of the things we wanted to do, but the other thing we wanted to do is put our culture and our appreciation of the Anclot River into that park, because the park is going to be right there on the Anclot River. So, one of the, one of the things we really wanted to do is incorporate that into the park, not just have all the different fun things in it, but have some fun things that have some meaning to the community. And I think what we're going to present to you tonight, and I think when you see the video of what it looks like, I hope you all agree it's going to be a real center point to that, that crossing the roads that leads to the downtown and the docks. And Jay, if you would tell them how we got to this point, and how we got to somebody who could design a park especially for this community.
Sure. Jay Jackus, Chief Recipient Officer. We selected the U.S. Communities contract for this project. With U.S. Communities, one of the saving graces was we didn't have to go out separately for engineering services, it's all included in the, the contract with Dominica. We've used U.S. Communities in the past for things such as electrical supplies, office supplies, and the Home Depot contract for MRO supplies. As the city manager mentioned, he wants to have something equally as good as the city of Dunedin. Dunedin selected the same firm to complete their park. The bad news is I don't think we have a video, but if you have any specific questions on U.S. Communities contract, or for the, the park itself, we do have Jeff Jones from Aquamarine, and Jim Sims from Dominica Recreation Product. I think, I thought that the video was provided in advance.
It should be there, unless, I think she come, Karen was giving a lesson today, and I think that might be the best way to do it, is show that video first, and then have them come up and talk, if hopefully the technology allows us to.
Can you hear it? It's the loudest it can go.
Put the mic, baby.
Put the mic there.
Just want it splashed out.
It's all right, it has the effect. These will be some of the special features that was designed specifically for our park. These will be some of the special features that was designed specifically for our park. We'll have our representatives from the company come up and answer some questions that you have on the park.
Good evening, my name's Jeff Jones with Aquamarine. And for record, I built the City of Dunedin Highland Splash Ground. So, we'll take care of you.
Basically, can you tell us about some of the features that we've added into this, some of the technology that we've added into it, the lightning, some of the things that, you saw the fun stuff up there, but some of the technological, some of the items in there that'll help us with maintenance monitoring it, and those nuts and bolts that aren't the fun stuff that are on the screen.
Sure, okay. Well, everyone can see what a spray ground is, it's an interactive water play for children. Your particular project has fourteen above-ground sprays or features and fourteen underground The system itself, we pride ourselves in automation, modern technology, automatic backwash, chemical automation, making it a very low maintenance item and not needing daily or hourly maintenance. Any other particular questions you might have?
The lightning feature?
Oh, it's lightning protection, I'm sorry, I didn't hear exactly what you said. It is, we have, we're included a strike guard system, which is a early warning detection for lightning. It shuts down the system when lightning is within five miles, it gives you a warning at fifteen, and a light indication ballard for these events.
And also, I don't know, I know it's complicated over my head and stuff, but do you or whoever's here, the system that it has where it hooks up with our president's system with Ray Page, how you coordinate those things on monitoring, just a little bit of description on that?
Yes, at the request of, at our meeting, it was requested that the access to the spray ground would be controlled by your city system, mainly through electronic magnet-operated As far as, you have additional automation or operation, observation, what did you ask? Sorry. As far as monitoring, chemical automation, that can be done through the RainBrain system. Sorry.
It's going to be connected to our existing SCADA system, so it could all be controlled through the wastewater treatment plant.
And Ray Page was heavily involved in these discussions to bring that there. Again, if you'll look, we've got it attached of a good budget. Technically, if we do all the things, of course, tonight we're only talking about the splash park, and I know you saw them design the shade structures, but those aren't set in stone yet, or how many. We want to build restrooms there and a picnic shelter facility. If we decide to do all of those with the splash park, as it goes right now, and depending on the contingency you see here, and a contingency in the splash park, we could need up to additional forty, forty-five thousand maybe to do those things, but as we get into the splash park and watch its cost and what's going on, and as we discuss the different things, we may phase in the shade structures, the thing we definitely have to do, obviously, now with a dog park and a place with a lot of kids, we have to do the restroom and stuff, so obviously the restroom would come and we would do that, and then if we needed the additional money for the picnic structure, and we're thinking there's going to be a lot of birthday parties and a lot of different things there, and right behind the splash park, a good picnic areas with shelters and stuff, might be a great amenity. But again, those things will come back to you at a later time, and if anything exceeds it, it'd be those things, so whether forty-five thousand of the penny money is not much to add to the project, but that will do later. The splash park and its cost is well within what we expected, again, to do a first-class splash park there that'll be the envy of the area, so available answering other questions of the board.
What's the tentative time as far as frame for building and opening the splash park?
It's estimated to take six weeks.
Six weeks.
Wow.
We're hoping to get this finished about the time of the Sponge Docks construction and have it ready for, ready well, be ready before summer for the kids.
Well, first, I just want to just thank you for bringing this forward. I know that when I'm talking to a lot of the kids, they've been asking, when can they get their splash park? I'm not sure this is going to meet their standards, you know, some of them have a great imagination as to what they wanted to do for these tunnels that go under the ground and the rest, but I think that they would be pleased with what we have going forward, so I'm glad that we finally got to this point, looking forward for that six weeks, you know, conservative estimate in terms of completion, so. With that, Commissioner Tierpenny.
Thank you. Mr. Lacour, you mentioned that additionally at this area, we'll be doing boat launch and kayak. I was aware of the kayak, have we now determined that this is the best viable option for a boat launch as well?
No, all I meant was canoe kayak-type launches.
Is there a possibility for the boat launch to be here?
No.
No?
Environmentally, it's not, environmentally, any motorized is not going to be able to be done at that site.
Okay. So, in terms of like, regulation and opening and closing this, I heard you say that, I guess it'll all be fenced and the gates will be done magnetically. What are we thinking as far as, I mean, how does the splash park work? The gates open and then you go in and you press a button and the water starts spraying? I mean, is that how it works, or how do we, are the water jets set on timers as well from X amount of time to X amount of time, or?
Once the park opens, the children can activate the spray ground by, they're called starting ballards, and all they have to do is walk in front of them. And then it operates for a fifteen-minute time period through a series of choreographed water display.
Do we have, I'm sorry.
So, in fifteen minutes it shuts down unless, and that's part of the interaction, the children quickly figure this out and they know how to restart it.
So, what are we thinking as far as when the park will open and close? Have we gotten that far yet?
No, we haven't got that far, but, you know, probably at normal daylight hours, the park will open.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dawson?
Thank you. First, thank you for being here, I enjoyed the video, I think the splash park looks great. One question I have, I see in the back up the cost for construction, I'm wondering what we're looking at in terms of ongoing maintenance costs? I'm not sure what would be involved from an ongoing maintenance standpoint.
Operational cost?
Any cost that the city is going to incur on an ongoing basis? I, you know, I see what it costs for construction, what are we looking at as time goes on, or do we have any calculation of that?
Sure. The City of Dunedin Highland Rec Center, they use approximately sixty to seventy gallons of chlorine a week, but that can also be lower, a lower consumption, and the peak obviously being during the summer. Electrical calculations are done on a project by project basis, we will generate energy calculations for you at the time of turning over the project. As far as, they do consume water, because it evaporates and participants carry it away. But as far as actual, those are the items, as far as actual cost, we can generate those for your project.
Yeah, that would be useful information when we can get it. I'm hearing the cost is, you know, sixty to seventy gallons of chlorine, energy cost, water cost. I'm not sure if there's any kind of replacement of any parts over time with wear and tear, or if they're all pretty?
Not for the first three years, there's preventive, recommended preventive maintenance, but overall, it's a relatively maintenance-free item. The reason cities choose them is because they don't require lifeguards, for one, there's no standing water, so you don't have the daily manpower expense.
I'd be interested, as we look at these other items, when we talk about restrooms and picnic shelters and so forth, I'd be interested in also looking at what the maintenance cost will be, I think that's an important part of it as well. There's been a lot of talk about the Dunedin splash park, I'm just curious how these two compare in size?
They're very similar.
Very similar.
Overall footprint, yes, sir.
How many kids, like, what's the capacity of the splash park? How many kids can save, like, is there a capacity posted, like, how many kids can play at a time?
There is, it's a difficult thing to control.
Sure.
But once engineering is performed, then we know the capacity, but fifty to sixty children. Thank you.
And also wheelchair access, as you saw in the video, which is glad to put in, you know, wheelchair accessible.
Are there any public comments on this item? One important one.
Told me he wasn't going to comment.
Well, you know.
My name is Andrew Larson, and I am one of the people that would be using this, the splash park if we get it, but I'm not thinking about getting it, I can, I have a way to put it in a positive light. Let's say we get it, we get all the picnic stuff, the restrooms, all that stuff, and fifteen years later, think about all the families that would be like, oh, look at this, Tarpon Springs, it has a splash park and all this wonderful stuff for the kids and everything, and let's go there. It increases the people that go, come here, and it helps create more money for the city. So like, in fifteen years, I'm sure most of the money we pay might come back. It might take longer, it might take less, but thanks, thank you.
You're wise, ma'am, Mr. Larson.
I think in fifteen years, he's going to be running profits.
I think he's got higher aspirations than this one.
Wow. David Bolton, 508 North Cross Avenue. I just have a couple comments that hopefully are being considered, I'm sure you guys are thinking about these things. Number one is safety. I've visited spray parks in Dunedin, out in West Chase, Venice, Florida, and there's a wide variety of safety mitigation for those people that are using those parks. Ours is probably the most remote, other than the one in West Chase, that is out by some ball fields, so just whether we'll have cameras on that park, those are kids out there, there'll be kids that are, you know, smaller, that maybe parents let go to the spray park because it's just down the street, but that is also a corridor that we do have a lot of traffic on that Pine Ellis Trail, easy access in and out, I would hate to see a kid disappear or something, and so what kind of safety concerns are we thinking about? Also, water quality, the Dunedin park that I've been to several times, we've never actually gone to because something turned the park off because the bacteria level got too high, so somebody, a kid maybe went in with a diaper or something. So, we have something there instructing people, and then maybe an age restriction, that if you're over eighteen, you have to be there with your kid, so we don't have adults, maybe that's a way of just saying if you're over eighteen, you're not allowed there unless you're accompanied by your kid, that's a kind of a fun way. And then, as far as the city goes, what we win people with is what we win them to, and we may have, may not be able to spend money to always outbid another place for the best and latest spray park, but what we can win people with, nobody else has. And so, we need to make sure we're not focusing on a spray park or something, we're focusing on Tarpon Springs heritage, culture, our Hellenic culture, our downtowns, our bayous, the history of our community, they can draw people to downtown, the Sponge Docks, and really focus on those, because, you know, another city down the street can open up another spray park that's bigger and better than us. And what we win them with is what we win them to, and if we just win them to a bigger spray park, or this, or that, somebody else down the street's going to open a bigger and better one. So, let's make sure we don't lose the focus of winning people with the greatness of what Tarpon Springs is, and that's our history and our culture. Thanks so much.
Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
I'd like to address this one concern about the filtration of water quality. Just after the construction of the Highland Rec Center, there were new rules, design rules for water quality, and today, the filtration systems are a hundred percent capacity, meaning a hundred percent of the water is filtered that is sent back to the spray ground and chemically treated. So, they've significantly raised the water quality and treatment standards for spray grounds since Highland was built.
Thank you. Did you all have anything else you wanted to say, Mr. Jackus? All right, well, with that, we're looking forward to this coming to reality. Can you vote to award the bid? Yeah, I guess we could do that, can we get a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tierpenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Ordinance and resolution, item number eight, resolution twenty thirteen dash fifty-four, final budget resolution for FY two thousand thirteen.
Resolution twenty thirteen dash fifty-four, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, it's resolution twenty thirteen dash fifty-four, by title only.
Ms. Walker?
This is our usual budget resolution to provide for items that were not covered in the original budget or the previous budget resolution that we had last December. It's required to be done by state statute within sixty days of the end of the fiscal year, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Ms. Walker? Any public comments on this item? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number nine is resolution twenty thirteen dash fifty-five, application thirteen dash seventy-six, site plan for reverse osmosis water plant, quasi judicial.
It's resolution twenty thirteen dash fifty-five, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application thirteen dash seventy-six, a site plan approval for municipal reverse osmosis treatment plant located at one six two four L and R Industrial Boulevard, providing for findings, providing for a certificate of concurrence, providing for conditions, and providing an effective date. This is a quasi judicial hearing where the commission acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At such a hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code to ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The commission may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code... that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. There is an established procedure which will be followed at this hearing. All witnesses must give the testimony under oath. All persons testifying in this hearing must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning at this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. The city staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant will then have an opportunity to cross-examine the city staff. The applicant will then present its testimony and witnesses. The city staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will then be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition to the application have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have an opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes of testimony. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which city staff will be given an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Following this, the commission will consider the matter. Commissioners may ask questions of witnesses at this point, and a motion will be made and a vote will be taken. At this point, I'd ask anyone to testify on this issue tonight to please stand and be sworn. You guys, no? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
This is application thirteen dash seventy-six for the reverse osmosis water treatment plant. The City of Tarpon Springs is the applicant on this application. I believe the board is very well informed about this project. It's been ongoing for quite some time now. What you have before you is the actual site plan approval for the RO building itself, as well as the onsite storage tank. The property location is sixteen twenty-four L and R Industrial Boulevard. The property contains approximately ten and a half acres, and is properly zoned and land used for this type of facility. Under the site plan review criteria, I'll call a couple of highlights, access will be provided via L and R Industrial Boulevard. The city will be extending that as part of this project from its current terminus to Wesley Avenue. Appropriate parking is being provided, landscaping and screening, sidewalks are all part of the site plan and do meet the Land Development Code. The endangered threatened species report was prepared by Tetra Tech. The only thing that was significance that was identified is there is suitable habitat for gopher tortoises on the site, although there were none immediately located. But as the application goes forward for construction, any, any tortoises will have to be dealt with in accordance with Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission regulations. Under the levels of service, they're really, everything complies with their level of service analysis requirements. The staff recommendation is to approve the application subject to our three standard site plan conditions. One, the developer's responsible for acquiring all their jurisdictional permits and for meeting the minimum criteria of the Land Development Code. Number two, construction plans signed and sealed by a registered engineer licensed to practice in the state of Florida must be submitted within one year of the date of final site plan approval. And three, the site plan shall expire within one year of the effective date unless an application has been filed for a building permit. This was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board last night. The board did recommend approval by a seven oh vote. The issues that were discussed and questions asked related to, you know, how the pipelines that itself are constructed, especially at intersections and things of that nature, the, what the brine discharge regulations are, any potential impacts from the stoffel chemical, as well as just a general explanation of the, of the project for the members that weren't, you know, may not have been as familiar and involved through the years as the Board of Commissioners has been. As I said, ultimately, they did recommend approval by a vote of seven oh, and you do have a resolution in your backup recommending approval, as well as all the site plans, ecological and ecological assessment report. Mr. Robertson is in the audience to ask any technical questions about the RO plant, if you have them, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Robertson or any additional presentation by the city or staff? Okay. This time, we'll hear from members of the public opposing the application.
Christopher Boski, one six zero two Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, three four six eight nine. First, let me go on the record and say that I'm not opposed. It's either opposed or against on these hearings. Simply using this opportunity to point out how we got here. It's important to know that our government bodies, the Army Corps of Engineers, the federal and SWF MUD, the Water Management District in Florida, were supposed to be protecting the wetlands in Florida. They were supposed to be protecting the wetlands so that water would go back into the aquifer to fill up the groundwater, so that we would have plenty of water for all of the wells for every project that ever we could build here, so that we could all have drinking water and water for all of our uses. The problem is, those agencies were corrupted, and they have since become dispensers, rubber stamps on these permits. You might as well have had a vending machine. You put your application in, put in the money for the permit, a machine inside stamps it and kicks it out of the machine, and you can pave over any wetlands you like. That's how we got here. So then, guess what the solution was? They're going to take all of our money, millions of our tax dollars, and say, oh, we'll fix it, don't worry about it. We're going to give you this money, which is our money, back to you guys, and then you can build these reverse osmosis water plants throughout the state, and that's going to fix it. No, that doesn't fix it. What that does is it's going to create more of these sinkholes, just like what happened in Dunedin and what happened earlier in the year when a man was killed. So what the city needs to do, you're going to move forward this, and I say, look, I'm not opposed to reverse osmosis plants, I'm not. I believe it needs to be done in an extremely responsible manner. That means wherever you're drawing from water underneath the ground, you have to have a seismic study constantly done to see if you're creating voids throughout the city. This can be done, this is something that must be done, because if somebody dies in a sinkhole that was created after this plant goes online, then the blood will be on your hands. So this is something that we can do, it's something that we must do to prevent any further tragedy. And we also have to prevent the paving over of any more wetlands, so that we cannot allow a single acre of wetland to be destroyed from here on out. This doesn't mean that we can't have more projects built, more things built throughout the state of Florida, it means build them responsibly. This, you know, it took a group of us to stand up against that Walmart on the Anclote River to keep them from destroying a number of wetlands. And some said it was a small number. I say we can't afford to lose any. As a matter of fact, that is the law. Under the first George Bush, not one single acre of wetlands is to be destroyed, but they constantly keep doing it. It took citizens to stand up for that, and so I asked the board to stand up and prevent that. You can still build things, you'd build it around the wetlands, you'd do it in a responsible manner, and this is the only way that we're going to survive. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public opposing the application? Any members of the public which are speak in support of the application?
Peter Delakis, five one four Ashland Avenue. As Chris mentioned, sometimes hard to come up here when you're really not against something or for something, you're just wanting to bring some things to light, and Chris did make some valid points on what's happened here in Florida over the years, where people sell out to that economic development dream of doing it quick, but I'll talk about that some other time. I want to talk about this project. For the staff report, it says sanitary sewer, twenty-five thousand six hundred gallons per day. It says sanitary sewer estimate includes domestic and processed water discharge. Is that processed water discharge, the brine discharge, is going? Okay, so if we can get a clarification on that, because my interpretation when I read processed water is the brine stuff. My biggest concern at this point, I did speak to Mr. Page last night a little bit about the injection well. When this project was envisioned, that wasn't part of it, but I do understand now the possible necessity for that. And I think also, as we move forward in that particular project, it's important to maybe coordinate that with where you're drawing water from the field, so maybe that injection is replenishing back into those similar areas. My concern also is with the environmental species report. It does state that there is appropriate habitat for indigo snakes. It does indicate with regards to the gopher tortoises that there were potential, several potentially occupied gopher tortoise burrows, potentially occupied mostly in the power easement line, also around near Old Dixie. It says a gopher tortoise survey will be needed to be conducted by an authorized gopher tortoise agent in these areas prior initiation of any proposed work on the project. So I'm assuming that in previous recollections of meetings, we already have someone who's on board as our contractor, design, build person, is that correct? So I would ask that they do employ some sort, either Tetra Tech or some environmental specialists, when they're putting in the pipelines, to monitor the activity as they progress, not just to go out and look and, and then put all the pipelines in and then see what happened afterwards. This may lead to potential issues where, when you have nests that aren't occupied on July of two thousand thirteen, but when we go to do this in May of two thousand fourteen, it may be totally different. So I think it's important that we do have monitoring along the way in that regard. And the last concern that I would say again is that as we progress with this project, we seriously consider what we put in our water that we give to our residents. Thank you.
May I wish to make a closing statement?
I don't really have a closing statement, just to address the, the one issue on the sanitary sewer. The, what's termed as the processed water discharge is the, the water that's used to clean the membranes essentially and other fluids that are associated with that on a daily basis. So that's the other part of that discharge into the sanitary sewer.
Are there any questions? Please stop there.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Vincent? On the L and R Boulevard extension, on the, on the first page of the, of the site plan, it may be deceiving to me, but is L and R Boulevard, I know it's intersecting with Wesley Avenue, but is that doing so in a straight line or is it, it's being shown here kind of curving off to the northwest, I think?
I believe it's in a straight line.
Straight line, yeah. I mean, it intersects kind of that corner where Wesley makes a turn. Okay, that's what, that's what I thought, I just, on this aerial here, it looks a little different. In terms of the gopher tortoises, you said that there's none there to date. Assuming six months, eight months from now, a tortoise does show up, that will be handled appropriately, and the gopher tortoise would be moved to the appropriate location.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, then chair will entertain a motion.
Motion.
A motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tierpenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next item we have is item number ten, resolution twenty thirteen dash fifty-six, Public Services Recreation Division Job Description.
Resolution twenty thirteen dash fifty-six, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the organization of the Recreation Division of the Public Services Department, specifically including reclassification of the recreation supervisor position to recreation superintendent and associated revision of position description and providing for an effective date here. That's resolution twenty thirteen dash fifty-six, by title only.
Good evening. Paul Smith, Public Services Director. This resolution's regarding the currently vacant recreation supervisor position in the Recreation Division of our Public Services Department, and this leadership position is vital to both our daily operations and our future planning. We completed a review of the opportunities that are possible with our current resources and also reviewed other recreation programs in our area, and I just want to summarize those findings, they're presented in the memorandum and the, and the backup for this item. But number one, opportunities exist within our current and potential future facilities and programs that need to be evaluated in detail for implementation. A recreation superintendent position at a pay grade twenty-one would be an appropriate level of leadership to match with our population, our current and potential facilities and programs, the marketplace, and surrounding communities. Now, with that proposed position, the functions are expanded in the job description attached, and those things would meet the job description to meet the position's functional needs, such as increased promotional and marketing activities, increased interdepartmental coordination, a more detailed review and research of current and potential facilities and programs, and detailed evaluation of our short and long-term needs. The current fiscal year fourteen budgeted salary for the Recreation Division leadership position is within the proposed pay grade twenty-one for the recreation superintendent position that I'm recommending. So in summary, I recommend that we approve this resolution to facilitate us putting leadership back in place and moving forward with our recreation services.
My only question is that, the, I guess the projection is not to go higher than what's budgeted for two thousand fourteen, or that...
Yes, that of course will...
...the salary.
It is within the range, of course. It'll depend on what applicants we get and where we fall, but I just wanted to report to you that that number is, that range, the budgeted number is within the range that I'm proposing for you.
Okay. Any questions for Commissioner Larson?
Thank you. A couple of quick questions. In the staff report, and you just read this part, opportunities exist within our current and potential future facilities. Potential future was put in bold. I, I was wondering if there was something in particular that that was... I'm glad you noticed that emphasis added. Really, I wanted to emphasize that we need to be thinking about not just right now, but I think some of your comments even got us thinking about, there's a whole bunch of other things that we could possibly be doing that we need to be thinking about. Part of our research, we visited some other facilities, including Largo, and we talked to the Recreation Director from the City of Dunedin, and just really got some inspiring ideas about some of the areas we could continue to develop. I think there's a lot of potential with the facilities we have now, and I think we can come to you with some more recommendations in those areas, once we have someone in place to evaluate this in detail. But I also think that there's some future opportunities, and I just wanted to make sure I emphasize that we're thinking about now and in the future.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad that we are thinking about the future with this. And as you mentioned, at, at previous meetings, I've, I've talked about the Recreation Division, and I've wondered whether or not we have adequate staff, and I don't mean this position, I mean whether or not we have enough, enough people in that division. And I understand that you did do a review of, of other recreation programs, you mentioned Largo and Dunedin and others. I understand that you were primarily looking at getting a better understanding for this particular position, but did you also, in that research, come to any conclusions as to whether or not we have the adequate number of people in that division?
Well, I can tell you, I, I looked at all of the programs of the surrounding cities, all the monthly programs, and got a good feel for how they're staffing their facilities, and certainly many of them are at much higher staffing levels than ours. But that doesn't necessarily mean we need to automatically ramp up fully to that level. I really think it's a matter of matching our needs with our resources and, and what the commission sees for us moving forward and matching that up with our budget and that sort of thing. So, yeah, I think there's a possibility to make some recommendations in that area, but I really would like to reserve that until we have someone in place that can really look at all those things.
Sure.
And in my mind, that person in place, we're going to be looking for somebody who's that visionary and to tell us if I need to come to you in the upcoming budgets and saying, I need this personnel, and this is what we get from that person. "I need this personnel," and this is what we get from that personnel, that's another reason for, and I want to thank the other cities that helped us, you know, the other local cities, like you mentioned, that helped us and directed us that way. And I think that's the type of leader we're looking for in this position and to tell us where we need to go and obviously what resources we'll need to go there in recreation.
Yeah, there was a high-level cooperation that was refreshing to see in the recreation industry. In fact, I have to say the City of Largo's director, she's the head of the Organization for Recreation Professionals, and she was quite helpful and even said, you know, "If there's somebody here, when you have a job opening that fits the need, I have no problem seeing someone moving up if there's an opportunity." So I really thought that was nice, that there's these open minds about it's all one big community and working together, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comments on this item? Chair will entertain the motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terri Penny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 11 has been deferred. Item 12 is Resolution 2013-61, Boys and Girls Club Christmas Tree Lot.
Resolution 2013-61, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, requesting an agreement with the DOT for use of a parcel of property, the northwest corner of U.S. Highway 19 and Tarpon Avenue in Tarpon Springs by the Boys and Girls Club, for sale of Christmas trees, providing for distribution and providing for an effective date. It's Resolution 2013-61 by title only.
This is just the document that they need. The Oaks Lodge, as in the last year, last couple of years, is going to be selling them for the Boys and Girls Club, and this is what they need from the DOT request from the city. They request this type of resolution, and we've done it for many years. There was a few years we skipped that we were supposed to do it, and DOT came back and asked us where the resolution's for. So this is almost exactly the one you've approved in the past couple of years, and this will be certified by the clerk tomorrow, and their representative will come get it and deliver it to FDOT per their requirement to allow them to sell the trees on the lot.
Any other questions? Anything else? Any public comments on this item? Chair will entertain the motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terri Penny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 13, ordinance 2013-24, outdoors display of merchandise, Sponge Docks, first reading.
Ordinance number 2013-24, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending Chapter 6, definitions of Appendix B of the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, community redevelopment area in Sponge Docks Smart Code, amending the definition of outdoor display of merchandise, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. That's ordinance 2013-24, first reading by title only. If approved, a second reading will be held on December 3, 2013, and was published October 30 and November 27, if approved.
Thank you. This is ordinance 2013-24, proposing additional amendments to the Smart Code regarding the outdoor display of merchandise in the Sponge Docks. This was thoroughly reviewed by the Board on November 5 and a lot of discussion, and ultimately sent to the Board of, the Planning and Zoning Board last night for review as an ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Board, when they reviewed this last night, there was a lot of discussion. I'm going to try to, you should have an addendum on the desk in front of you, staff report, addendum, that kind of summarizes what happened with the Planning and Zoning Board. So a lot of the discussion centered on types of merchandise being displayed, displays on public sidewalks, forcing people to step out into the streets, concerns about constitutionality of the proposed changes, questions about the origins of outdoor display in general, why the ordinance was even being, you know, looked at, how we got there. There was some general discussion and dislike for the enclosure requirement. They don't like the look of the fences. This was the plan, some of the Planning and Zoning Board comments. There was confusion regarding the wording changes on, specifically on number three. Thought that that could be more clearly written. And general concerns about ADA accessibility requirements with the displays encroaching onto the public sidewalk. There was quite a bit of public comment. I'm sure we'll hear most of that repeated tonight, so I won't go into a lot of detail about that. There was comments both in support and in opposition. Ultimately, after review, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended to deny the proposed changes by a 7-0 vote. With that, I will, if you want me to go into detail about the ordinance itself, we reviewed it in depth at the November 5 work session. There's no other changes. It's still being presented as it was, and I'll be happy to answer questions at the appropriate time in the hearing. Thank you.
And again, just to add, why this was even brought forward is in the sense of fairness after we passed the ordinance, we went down and began to enforce the ordinance, and we heard, some people have reservations about it and feel that their voice wasn't heard. You got to hear their voice when they came before you and we put it on the agenda, and it was your decision to send it to the Planning and Zoning Board. And I will tell you, last night, we had a full Planning and Zoning Board, and it's a very diverse group on that board, young and a little older, I won't say since I'm old, but young and older. We've got people who've got roots here on the board. We have lawyers that are, in the past, have been concerned with property rights, a very diverse group. And I think what you wanted to kind of hear by sending it to them, because pretty much on this board, I thought it was leaning maybe towards you did an ordinance, you put it into effect and go to it. But the individuals in this audience had a second chance to have their voice heard last night before, a very diverse, independent boards of citizens to look at which way we're going at the docks. So I am completely satisfied right now that this group has had the full opportunity of fairness to get their points through. And I also think you need to take those diverse groups of citizens' opinions of it who overwhelmingly denied it. And I'll go back to some of the comments from the last meeting, especially Commissioner Terri Penny, and the beauty if you go down there and look at those shops in the morning before all the, however you want to call it, objects or junk goes out on those sidewalks. And I want to again reiterate, 20 years standing, this was not my compromise or the other one, because I've always said we need to take them all off the docks and enjoy the natural beauty of the docks. And even some of the ones who criticized us for the Sponge Docks and taking the flavor away, I don't know how those same people come up and support all that stuff blocking the beauty of the buildings there. I just can't fathom some of those opinions, but I think the voices spoke last night from an independent people looking, and I think you should really take that into consideration, what they said when we're making the judgment. But I'm completely satisfied that they've had their chance to make their argument, and again, you don't have to take any action to this ordinance because you don't have to entertain it or go. The people have had their chance to say, if you're satisfied with the first ordinance you passed, and we're ready to go down there and start tomorrow and start enforcing that original ordinance.
Thank you. I don't know if anybody have any questions here, so I'll open it up for public comments. Nothing. You have four minutes there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mary Coburn, 15 East Orange Street, Tarpon Springs. I'm here today representing several shop owners, and I've talked to a variety of people down in Sponge Docks. I've been down there for two days. I was here last night. It really wasn't 7-0. Mr. Funzey was against it because he thought it was badly written, and the same thing with Mr. Stavropoulos. So the vote, even though it was 7-0, it wasn't that they were completely against us on this, but that's beside the point. What we're here today to do is ask you to enact the ordinance as it's in front of you. And the reason being, when you enacted this ordinance, I don't think any of you calculated that you were impacting private property in the way that you are. And unless you make these amendments, this ordinance is going to apply directly to private property owners. That includes the Sponge Docks, the Sponge Exchange, everybody in the Sponge Exchange. That includes somebody like this, and I'm sorry for the small picture, but it's Mr. Skarulis's shop, the Sponge Factory at the end across from Pappas. It has a very large private property porch. It's going to impact private property owners that have standing leases, that made their leases based on retail square footage, that they're paying pretty substantial rent for. Some of these people are going to have a third, and there are at least one that's going to have half their retail space taken away from them. They're still going to have to pay the rent. They have a contract, but now they have half the retail space available to them. And the public interest in this is safety. You have some aesthetic police powers, but you've got to have a compelling interest. And in the private property case, to encroach on private property to this degree, you don't have it here. These people should be allowed to make their living down there. They've committed to these contracts. I don't think you ever envisioned that somebody that has a shop in the Sponge Exchange is going to be in violation of the ordinance that you passed, but they are. If you ask the city attorney, he will tell you this is going to apply across the board. There is no exception or provision for private property. There are property, shop owners that have leases with porch space, and they're going to be denied use of that square footage. They're going to be limited to exactly what's here, 36 inches, 30 inches out, period. So in Mr. Skarulis's case, and he's not a client, but I'm just showing you what happens to him, these lovely, I think they're lovely, displays, these little boats that have names and have the sponges displayed, they got to go because they're not attached to the wall and they're not 30 inches. This is all private property. So you are really, really limiting people's ability to make a living down there, and that's not the point of the city commission. You're not supposed to be doing things to stop them from being able to make their living. You're supposed to help them be successful. You know, if they make their place look so hideous, they're not going to be there long. People gravitate to an attractive business, and if it's tacky and ugly, they're going to go under. I mean, that's the law of economics. So we don't need to be really getting involved that deeply into somebody's business. We need to try to assist them and help them to be successful. That is the biggest problem I have with this, is that you have no cutout for private property in the previous ordinance. Now, Mr. Lacouris and Ms. Vincent drafted this ordinance for your consideration as a compromise measure, and it makes provision for private property. It allows private property owners to utilize their space freely so long as they put the barrier up to protect the public. And that meets the necessity for protecting the public, and we wholeheartedly acquiesce to it. The 66 inches is being asked by these people because it is private property. Shouldn't they be allowed to have a 60-inch display on their private property? That's our request. Since the part that has to be attached to the wall, it has to be attached. The 33-inch display or 36-inch display has to be attached to the wall. That's part of the ordinance. The few inches isn't going to matter because it has to be attached. Even if it's 66, it's got to be attached. There's no public safety argument that they're going to be hit with the rack if it's attached to the wall. So I really don't, it's not a compelling governmental interest here that's sitting out there that's not being taken care of. But it is a pretty intrusive government that's coming in and telling these people how to run their businesses. And, you know, I don't always like what I see down there, but it's not a shopping mall. It's not Westfield. They don't own it.
Can you kind of wrap it up for me?
Okay. I'm saying, we are not the owners of a shopping mall as citizens and citizens of Tarpon Springs. These are individual property owners that own these buildings, and to some degree, they have a right to run their businesses the way they want to. That's our basic fundamental freedoms here. We're starting to really encroach, and so I'm asking you to take this the way it is and make that consideration, and I thank you.
My name is Mike Houlis, 1504 Riverside Drive. On a technical point, Maria is right. Mary's right. What's going to happen is there's three sets of properties. There's somebody that has a door, and when they open the door, they step on city property, and they're the ones attaching to the wall and following rules, and you can dictate any way you'd like, I guess. Then there's some property that's on Dodikanees that has four or five feet of private property before they get to the city property. Then there's some property inside the Sponge Exchange that's several feet away from the city property. So what's going to happen? You're going to apply the law differently to all three of them. And then the attorney, the city attorney's going to say, "Well, they don't cite the people in the Sponge Exchange because they're behind a retainer wall." But then the other person that does face Dodikanees, who's seven or eight feet back from your city property, they're going to enforce it a little different against him. So you're going to open up the door to unequal citation, and that's unequal protection under the law. And that's the 14th Amendment, 14th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. And that's what we're talking about. But the real essence is you can require headlights on a car so that you won't run into somebody else like President Reagan said, but what color the car is, is up to the man that owns it. These restrictions are gone to the point now that they're all so aesthetically, and you're going to run people out of business. I guess y'all can do whatever y'all want. Now, there was a few minutes, and I think, maybe, but I think Mark Lacouris will agree. We tried to come up with one that incorporated all that so that it would protect the private property, be different on the city property. By putting enclosures, it would even give more benefit to the Sponge Exchange. And in the compromise, the 66 inches was done. We're asking that the law, that the ordinance as typed by Mark, even though he's not putting his hands on it one way or the other, it was done for a reason. I didn't write it. I didn't dream it up by myself, and it didn't take long. It didn't take two minutes of conversation to come to it. And we ask that you approve that ordinance like it is so that we don't have unequal enforcement of this ordinance. Otherwise, there's going to be problems forever on it, and unfair problems. Thank you.
Good evening. Athena Sardulius, 735 Dodikanees Boulevard, Suite 57. I own Tarpon Sponge Incorporated. Well, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't understand the vagaries of the law. I don't pretend to. I'm just going to explain my personal experience and let you consider my dilemma. I own Tarpon Sponge Inc., as you know, which is in what's left of the almost 100-year-old sponge storage lockers. I have a lease with my landlord that includes the lockers as well as the patio space in front of it that's under a covered awning, that also abuts the courtyard of the Sponge Exchange. All of this is private property. I have a barrier, the outer wall of the Sponge Exchange separates me from the public sidewalk. So not at any time do I have displays on public property or encroaching anywhere near it. So 50% of the square footage that I lease from my landlord is this exterior covered patio space. So I'm not sure how he would feel about me asking for a reduction in my rent, but I would certainly try that. I don't know that he would be open to that. In order to maintain my business, I suppose you'd say my profit margin, I would have to go in and reconfigure the interior space that I do have and thus destroy the historic aspect of my building. So I think I'm probably the most unique, kind of fell in the cracks here between these ideas. So I'm just posing this dilemma... So I'm not sure how he would feel about me asking for a reduction in my rent, but I would certainly try that. I don't know that he would be open to that. In order to maintain my business, I suppose you'd say my profit margin, I would have to go in and reconfigure the interior space that I do have and thus destroy the historic aspect of my building. So I think I'm probably the most unique, kind of fell in the cracks here between these ideas. So I'm just posing this dilemma to you. I don't think it's your intention to put me out of business or destroy a historic building. I don't think that for a minute. But I'm not sure how I would proceed if you have to enforce this. Anyway, that's my problem. Just throwing it out there. Thank you for your attention.
Jim Skarulis, I have the Sponge Factory in 15th Dothekinese Boulevard. Basically, Mary kind of covered what I was going to say today, but I would still like to put my two cents' worth. I'm still confused as to how we reached this point here. Yes, it's our fault too, as store owners, that we couldn't police ourselves. But on the other hand, though, I realize that there's ordinances on the books. And I'd like to know, were some of these people that were going against what the ordinance was, were they ever approached? Were they ever warned? Were they ever fined? So it's obvious, nothing was done. And basically, it gets down to the same point again that I spoke of last time, that we feel like the ones that have private property, that we're being punished. Why? Because somebody wasn't taking care of business. That's exactly how I feel. And it's a shame that we reached this point. And like I said, it's also the business community's fault. If we would have been all together, we've got to have taken care of our own situations. Unfortunately, we've gotten to the point as to where it's everybody's battling each other. And that's the thing that we have to overcome. Now, whether it's through the association, whether we join into the association and get involved, like I said, it's our own fault. We stopped being involved in the association. Things are getting done without our, putting in our two cents' worth. And we need to get back to business. And trust me, we need to get away from this situation as to where we're at each other's throats right now. We either start working together or we're all going to go downhill together. But I would like for you to take into consideration the situation with the private property. I've ordered two new boats. We were going to fix the deck. We have a deck on there that we don't even utilize because we have, the tourists come in, they like to take photographs behind the diver. And that is going to be useless to me. I mean, it's just going to be one empty space out there right now. And Mr. Lacouris was there, and Renee was there. You'll notice that even the displays that I have outside, that they're locked down, nothing moves. There's plenty of space for wheelchairs, wheelchair accessibility for the people to get around. I don't overload the place. But in the end, we're all going to get punished. Our store, the stores that have balconies, everything. Everything's just going to be on lockdown. So please consider that aspect. Thank you.
Anita Prost, 901 Bay Shore Drive, Tarpon Springs. And I am on the Planning and Zoning Board, but I'm here talking as a citizen tonight about the Dothekinese Boulevard and what's going on down there. You have to know the history of what's happened through the years. When the Sponge Exchange was remodeled, the walls were still there. They reinforced the walls in the back and the front. This gentleman's Sponge Factory, when it was built, and Mrs. Giorgio built it, and the plans were brought to the city, I think if you look at her building permit, she was allowed with the front there at that time. And it has been that way all these years. I think what we need to look at is the historic aspect of the Sponge Exchange. Last night, we said sidewalks weren't wide enough. Some are. The sidewalks that had been widened were widened because they had to be fixed. They were cracked, people were falling, and they made them a little wider. You go on one end, the store on the other end of Halas, there's so much stuff out there that people bump into the display racks. Shoes, hats, dresses. That's not what the Sponge Exchange became, started out to be. It was marine, sponges, shells, things to do with diving all the time. This is what you see now. I want you to see this. They're putting up poles. That's not what the Sponge Exchange and the Sponge Dothekinese is all about. One of them even has a wig on it. We're selling wigs, displaying.
Do you want to pass it down?
It's the clothes. It's the clothes, it's the shoes. We didn't want Walmart.
You need to cover it to the mic.
We have a Walmart down at the waterfront. That's what it looks like. The points being missed here, we have to clean up what we've got there. It's gotten out of hand. As a citizen, you go down there, and they're in the street with the flags. You don't know which way to go. They're yelling at you, "Eat at my place. Come to my store," handing out flyers, which we're not enforcing. We were doing away with that. Nobody's enforcing anything. The point is, we need to clean up what we're selling down there and the displays. It doesn't look good. It's nasty. You go to St. Augustine, you go to Key West, you go up to Apalachicola. They don't have anything in front of their stores. Nothing. But their businesses are there and thriving. We don't want a carnival in Tarpon Springs. We want the historic aspect of what Dothekinese is about. You wouldn't allow the Balerises to put up what they wanted because it'd be too much like a carnival or flea market. Well, that's exactly what you've got down there now. Today, I had someone call and tell me, "Anita, we hate you. Don't come to the docks." I said, "Fine, I'll come anyway." You're too old. I said, "Age makes knowledge." And I have the history and the knowledge. And she says, "You're a has-been." I said, "You better believe it. I have been fighting for the docks all my life." And I will continue. And she's sitting in the audience, and she knows what she told me. This is heritage. This is what people come to see. Pappas Restaurant put us on the map. People came to eat at a famous restaurant, the Lighthouse Cafe, they came to eat. And they came to see the sponging industry in Tarpon Springs. They didn't come to see the Walmart dresses and the plastic shoes and the straw hats, the monkeys made out of coconuts, the wood snakes that you can point at people. Your merchandise sells. Better merchandise sells. Look at what you're putting in your stores. Shells, sponges, marine. That's what it's all about. Clean it up. That's what we have to do, is clean up Dothekinese and the stores. The gentleman at the Sponge Factory, I can fight for you because I know what happened when they brought those plans in here. Don't let, don't use this. Clean it up. That's your responsibility. We have the Golden Crescent in Tarpon Springs. Sponge city of the capital of the world. Sponge capital of the world, not flea market city down there. Think about what you're doing to the heritage of what Tarpon is all about. The mayor's father worked with the sponges for years. The city manager's father was a sponger. Your father-in-law and grandfather worked with the spongers, Jeff. Mr. Terrapini used to stock the boats for the sponge divers. I'm not saying it's strictly Greek. It's all of us. I'm proud that I'm an American and my American heritage. But when I went to Coney's this year, cloths, roads, beautiful stores. The architecture down there is beautiful, but we're hiding it. And this, and I will be quiet, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mrs. Sardoulias was wonderful to give me this about a book that she has in her store. Twenty Thousand Divers Under the Sea, about the Mediterranean and Western Atlantic sponge trades. This is what Tarpon is. Not selling monkey coconut heads, dresses, shoes, hats on the road, telling people like gypsies, "Come and do this. Come and do that." Be dignified of what you have. Be proud of your heritage and what your forefathers and yis and poppers and ants and others made for you. And it's a property owner's debt, but the people in the stores are the renters. And that's the difference too.
My name is Merlin Kretzik. I have, my wife and myself have three stores on the Sponge Docks. We have Gloria's Gifts, which is one that she may have been referring to. We have Seaside Paradise, and my favorite store. First of all, I think, I didn't realize she was getting into what we sold. I didn't know that that was even an issue here tonight. But if it is, I've been on the Sponge Docks 24 years. I wasn't the first person to sell dresses on the Sponge Docks. I wasn't the first, I don't sell monkey hat, whatever she's talking about, I don't sell them. But if I did, I wouldn't have been the first one. I wasn't the first one to sell shoes. I wasn't the first one to sell anything that I'm selling, jewelry or whatever. This was done before I was here. Far as the racks, they've been here before I was here too. I know that for a fact because they were here when I got here. People had racks. I don't understand. I believe the heritage of the Sponge Docks is exactly right, sponges. I do believe all that, and I wouldn't want to change that. But I also know that in order for people to make a living, if we all sold only sponges and if everybody had sponges in front of their store, it would be only common sense. It would be like a war. You're a dollar, I'm 75 cents, you're 50. Before you know it, nobody's making a dime. You couldn't survive on that kind of a mentality. It's impossible. You have to, if she was a merchant, she wouldn't even talk that way. It's impossible. As far as the height of the racks, the 36 inches, when I came here, that wasn't, that wasn't nothing. There were, 36 inches was not, they were higher like they are today. We don't make these racks. We buy them. The racks have a standard between 66 and 72 inches high. We don't control that. That's the way we buy them. So, and actually, as far as a safety thing, I have never heard of one incident, and I don't believe anybody else has either, where a rack has hurt, anybody has gotten hurt from a rack. Now, it's even, the way the proposal is now, it's even more safe because now they're supposed to be attached, or will have to be attached to the wall, which makes them even more safe. The height has no bearing on how safe they are. Absolutely none. If 30 inches from the wall, there's 30 inches from the wall if it's 36 inches high or 10 feet high. It's just a safe. There's absolutely no sense in that. All it does is cost all the merchants to figure out what to do with their racks, how to get new racks, what to merchandise in that amount. It doesn't make sense. We're there, we're all on the Sponge Docks. All the merchants are here for the very same reason, to make money. That's the only reason we're there, believe it or not. That's the only reason we're there. If you take our livelihood away, what have you accomplished? How can you say, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make sense to try to say, "Our rents are expensive, by the way." We have to try to figure out how to pay our rent, our, all our overhead. Everything is expensive. Our insurance is expensive. Our wages are expensive. And we have to try to eat too. We want to make a profit. I don't think anybody on this, any of the merchants are getting rich. So, I mean, I just think, like I said, I was a little bit, didn't come up here to talk about what we were selling. I was kind of like stymied when I heard that even that became an issue. Since I, I mean, since I, like I say, I've been there for 24 years. I don't see a lot of difference. Back in the Sponge Exchange, it was stores that just sold dresses. When I came in, they're still are. On the street, everything was pretty much like it is today. Yes, we do perhaps have more dresses today than what there was at that time. I would agree with that. You know why? They sell. That's why. Why would we want to put in a bunch of stuff that doesn't sell? Are, we, like I said, we've been there for 24 years. If my customers didn't like what they saw, I wouldn't be there anymore. They wouldn't come in. We have not hundreds, but thousands of people that have told us they like our stores. They like our stores. They bring their, some of them live in the area, and they get company from out of town. They bring their people to the Sponge Docks. They like to bring them down there. Their company can go shopping. They take them out to eat. They maybe take the boat ride. They have a nice day. And I've also heard somebody say it's turning into a tourist trap. Every tourist place, you can call it a tourist trap if you want, but the number-one thing in every tourist place is the merchandise. And that includes Tarpon Springs. The restaurants are very important. Nobody could ever deny that the sponges and the boat ride isn't important because of course it is. But still, I'll bet you more dollars are taken in on merchandise because that's the number-one thing in any.
If you could just kind of wrap that up for me. I think we got the gist of what you're talking about.
Yes, I think you have to. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good evening. Here we are again. My name is Rita Kostorias, and I live at 611 Hope Street. Well, we are back here for the same thing. The, the displays. We had come the last time to you with the revised edition that Mr. Lacouris had made. We asked for the, it was 66. We had asked for 72. We forgot about the 72 inches of the rack. And we had said we would accept exactly what was on the revised edition that you did. For some reason, you send us back to the planning and zoning. Planning and zoning, for some reason, again, they started the same thing. They send us back here. It seemed to me that you did not want to vote last time. That's why you sent us back to planning and zoning, so we can come back here and maybe be denied. But we, like I said, we agreed with the 66 inches. We agreed with the 30 inches away from, we agreed of having bolted them down to the walls. What else is there? As far as now I hear, we have dresses, we have shoes. That's what people want to buy. They want to buy a summer dress. They want to buy shoes that are with beads and Florida-looking to take back home or go to the beach. What is wrong with that? Is the city going to tell the people what to sell? We all have to have sponges or shells. When, when does it stop? Now, as far as the Sponge Exchange, Mr. Houlis was, Michael Houlis was the one that started the Sponge Exchange, bought from all the shares from the owners that used to own the Sponge Exchange. And he had trouble, he can tell you, or even Anita Prost can tell you the problem. He had to set up the Sponge Exchange. Now, everybody, the Sponge Exchange is beautiful after he went through with it, all the trouble. This should not be exempted because they're behind the wall. If it's going to be a law, it's going to be a law for everybody. And as far as the heritage, we, I have heritage. And we all have heritage in Tarpon Springs. I have Marigot Street that was named after my grandfather's brothers. I have binary subdivision that was named after my grandmother's brothers. I've been here only 57 years, but my family has been here since 1905. And we love this town. But you cannot run it down. Now, if there are offenders, pass the law as you drafted it. If there are offenders, deal with them one-to-one. Go down there and look and say, "Wait, wait a minute. You have too many things. These have to go." Deal with them one-to-one. And they are offenders. I agree. But you cannot throw the baby out with the water just because of few offenders. We have to be sensible. And as far as the beauty of the Sponge Docks, there's a house on the docks that is, we call it the cat house. Must have 50, 60 cats underneath it.[1740.83] And for a while, there were vagrants living on the front porch and we had to call somebody to, a victim. We didn't say anything to the owner. So, please, consider what you have drafted and pass it. And if there are offenders, deal with the offenders one to one. Not all of them. It's not fair. People try, work from 7 o'clock in the morning till 10 o'clock at night to make a living. They employ people. They pay taxes. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
For your consideration.
My name is Rita Giatris. I'm at 1301 Mary Ari Drive in Holiday. A few weeks ago, I was right here and discussing the same thing again. I am at Bill's Lighthouse. Let me tell you a little bit about Bill's Lighthouse. It's on the corner at the end at the Roundabout. I've been there for six years. I'm also right next door to the Spice Man and the Candy Shop. And yet, people don't even know that I'm there. If I didn't have my items outside, I would have gone out of business five years ago. Ms. Anita Proto's saying that everybody has clothing. I do not. I have shelves. I have sponges. I have airplanes and I also have, once again, my wind chimes. My wind chimes is my business. Now, Reyes said she also has wind chimes. That's wonderful. She didn't have wind chimes a month ago. She's been in business for two years. I've been there for six. I personally don't care what she has. I'm just trying to make a living. That is all. My racks do not exceed 48 inches. My overhang is 80 inches high. Why I am not allowed to hang my chimes for people to, to chime them, to talk about them, to do whatever it is that they choose to do and then come into my shop and spend their money? I don't understand. It also draws people down to Bill's Lighthouse. At first, when I first opened up, I used to sit and look down at Halas and wonder, why in the world weren't people coming all the way to the end? Was there an invisible wall that nobody could come through? Well, now they're coming through. And so, I would really, really like for you folks to consider this highly because my business, more than likely, will go out of business if I can't get people in my doors. Thank you.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. Traditionally, all the years you've seen me come down here and speak, I don't tend to get involved in, in these types of disputes because I don't pick sides generally. But I do side with the Constitution of the United States every time. And when this came up last night, Mr. Dagnall was asked if he had reviewed the ordinance and he said he wasn't asked to, but off the cuff, he believed that it was not unconstitutional. I do not accept any advice off the cuff from an attorney. There are two types of attorneys in this world, those who do research and those who do not do research. And this thing must be researched in order to know if somewhere down the road, someone were going to be able to challenge the city and sue the city. So, my concerns are with the city and potential encroachment into someone's private property. I mean, it was mentioned last night that nobody's asking for Ace Hardware to put up a wall or a fence in front of their outdoor stuff on their private property or Walmart, God forbid. They've got a bunch of stuff out in front of their building. Also, is anybody suggesting that the flowers or wood that is stacked up in front of Publix, will they have to build a fence around that? Or some, I mean, it was mentioned by the city staff, the last meeting, that there was a special thing about the sponge docks, the only place that you could do this in town where people could put outdoor stuff, but it, yet, I just mentioned places where it does in fact exist. So, where do you draw the line? Where do you draw the line where the government will encroach and force people to do things, quote unquote, for safety reasons? If it's a true, in fact, safety reason, then I'm all for it. If it's just to quote unquote, clean it up, hey, if you really think you got to clean it up, I'm not going to get involved in that. But if you guys want to do that, you just got to be mindful of the law. And the law means something to me and I am a big believer in how government can help people. Hell, just a moment ago, I mentioned how we ought to start our own municipal bank. That would be a government-run bank. This has been done in the United States and it's been very wildly successful. So, there are areas where the government can help, but there are also areas where the government ought to stay away, keep their hands off. Like these people's businesses, if you're going to get involved in that, you might think twice about how far you're going to go with it. And I'm not saying whether you should do this rack size or clean it up, not clean it up. I'm simply saying adhere to the law and get a second opinion when it comes to the constitutionality of things. Because that is a very, very specific branch of law. Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Gouchman, 735 De Decanese. My issue is on the public property. And I know it was brought up at the commissioners' meeting, the last one, about if, if it should be separated pertaining to the private property and the public property. Because I think at the end, if we want, it was, it was brought up, if you guys wanted to vote on just one part of the public property and then of the private property. The private property is a totally different issue. I have my opinions, but that's for me to keep. Public property, though, the appearance, you, as I said the last time, and I said last night, you're going to spend a million and a half dollars on fixing up the docks and you're still going to have six or 10-foot racks in front of your store of clothes, of Indian dresses, of shoe racks that are unkept, hat racks. It's obscene, it's, it's just an ugly scene. It looks like a flea market. So, consider the private property as, as one thing, public property as something else, possibly with this ordinance, separate it into two. I don't know if it's possible to be done or whatever. But the major, my complaint, and I think of the association that I'm not representing, but I am part of, is the appearance on the public property of six-foot racks. We've come to a conclusion that 36, there is a difference between a 36 or a 66, or a 72, or a 96-foot rack. Appearance-wise, you can see the building when it's only 36 inches high. The higher you go, the only thing you're going to see are those ugly things that are hanging outside. And I think if you're going to spend that kind of money on fixing up the docks, I think you should also think about the appearance. And I don't think it's so much the merchandise that's in the stores that someone was talking about. Outside, for years, for 50, 100 years, it's been the sponges and all that kind of stuff. We can't restrict someone just to put that kind of stuff in. But if you only have 36 inches high, you're going to, you're going to have to change your merchandise that's outside. You're not going to have those racks of clothes and, and dresses. So, what's in your store, it's, it's your choice. And I don't think that person meant that you should only have sponges in your store. It's just what's outside is the appearance. And that's what we're just trying to clean up. Thank you.
If anyone else want to speak, if you would just do a, you know, small favor and maybe come forward and we can try to maybe see what the verdict is.
George Beliris, 1028 Peninsula Avenue. I wasn't going to speak on this and, but I've listened to several people here. Two sayings in Greek, one is, which in English means poverty breeds friction. And the other one is, which means a table that is already set and all you have to do is sit down and eat. Now, the Beliris family started in 1904. We started the first attraction in Tarpon Springs in 1924 and it's still going on, 90 years later. I would say the Beliris family, along with the Pappas family, did a lot in accommodating the tourists that were coming to Tarpon Springs. But the fact of the matter is, it's not your merchandise, it's hanging out there, this is ugly. I mean, what it is, it's so slow, you've got nothing else to do but look at what your neighbors doing or not doing. Your concern should be taking care of your problem. We became a tourist attraction, not by design. Nobody sat down and said, let's make this a tourist situation. What happened is, a bunch of Greeks came from Greece, started a sponge industry here, didn't start it, but got into the sponge industry here. And media happened to fall in love with that story. It gave them danger, it gave them intrigue, it gave them cultural, it gave them everything else. Nonetheless, as a result of that, media falling in love with Tarpon Springs, three full-length movies were filmed from 1936, 1946, and 1953 about Tarpon Springs and the Greek sponge I've been involved, in the 70 years that I've been there, with 47 documentaries, ABC, NBC, CBS, What's My Line, On The Road With Charles Kuralt, Parrish Three, all over the world. Not about me, about Tarpon Springs and the Greeks and the sponge diving. Your Mickey Mouse, whether you like it or not, is the Greek and the sponge. That's non-existent almost anymore. We have four boats. Your eyesight and your position should be, okay, let's look at our history. We're a tourist attraction for over 70, 80 years. Why? I just got through telling you why. But now, you've lost, you're down to four sponge boats. And they can't get crews to go on these boats. You've lost the shrimp boats. You've lost the fishing boats. You're losing the crab boats. All of these constituted a commercial working waterfront, which Tarpon Springs, for many years, enjoyed the position of being one of the largest in the state of Florida. But all of these things are leaving. And the question is, what can you do about it? Well, you can make one effort that we made in 1959. There was 25 boats with the sponge buyers and everything after the disease. And we went to Greece and brought in 100 divers and crew members and put the industry back together again, not thinking in the terms of tourism, thinking in the terms of the sponge industry. It took off and it failed again in the 70s. 1985, the Mediterranean died, so the only place in the world that they could look for sponge would be Tarpon Springs or in this hemisphere. So, in 1985, I went to Germany and had a meeting with 15 different countries that wanted sponge. They couldn't buy them anywhere except Cuba, Tarpe, and some in the Bahamas. So, I came back and we put together, from a $200,000 industry, we put together a $15 million a year industry for 20 years, from 1985 until whatever the 20 years was. Well, this did two things. It regenerated the Mickey Mouse. It regenerated the interest of media and media has been and will always be your advertising agency for free, providing you have a story for them to write about. So, instead of worrying about whether somebody's got a rack that's 20-foot high or 10-foot high, or I don't like this and I don't like that, start thinking. Because all of this situation here is simply because you're not doing enough business. If you were doing enough business, if you were busy, you wouldn't care what the hell anybody else put outside their door. So, I, I get really upset to think that for 70 years, we enjoyed a beautiful tourist business that gave us employees, even to this day, close to 1,000 people. It's one of your biggest employers in town. The tourist business, excuse me, I don't know what the figures are, but at one time, it was $43 to $50 million a year tourism. When Pappas was around, they were doing 10 or 11. Today, I don't know what you're doing. You've got 100 gift shops. We're sitting here in City Hall stabbing each other in the back and trying to figure how in the hell we're going to make things work by tearing everybody down. That's not the answer, folks. The answer is, sit down. Revitalize your Mickey Mouse. Otherwise, you've got nothing to offer. Nothing that's different, nothing, either that or dig into your pockets very deep and put enough money together to advertise Tarpon Springs and let the people of the world know what's going on, instead of fighting each other all the time. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Beliris. You gave the most insightful words tonight. Revitalize our Mickey Mouse. Earlier, we're talking about a splash park. Mr. Bolton made a good comment. Next city's going to have a bigger, better one. What was it that brought people here? Shrimp boats, sponge boats. I have to say, we've hired an economic development specialist and we're missing out on the biggest economic development aspect of our city. Years ago, we started a project, and I have to say, Ellen brought this to us and I haven't seen anything more of it since, about a working waterfront. We need to reevaluate our philosophy as to what we're actually going to approach for businesses or economic development to come here. It's not about 35 house subdivisions off a Keystone Road that they're going to sell for quarter million, half a million dollars where you can get sales development. We need to refocus about redeveloping the shrimp boat industry there, the sponge boat industry. It's still there. Shrimp boats are still going out of Apalachicola or Port Charlotte or somewhere. People are still buying and eating shrimp. There's still shrimp boats. They need places to be repaired. Are we doing anything to attract marine businesses that do boat repairs? Do I hear an answer? Yes or no? I hear silence. Well, the thing is, is we need to focus back on those basics. Pinellas County, for years, we've been hearing it, we need to save these industrial lands. They turned down a project, another one, a few months ago. Well, we've got to save these industrial lands. That's part of our industry. So, I don't know if it needs to have that working waterfront group come back together or reform it, but that's where we need to focus on. And once that's rebuilt, you'll have plenty of people coming down and you won't need to be arguing about these petty things of 66 or 72 or 36. Let's focus on the bigger picture there. Thank you.
I assume that's it for public comments.
I just want this to be extremely clear regarding the sponge exchange. The way that this is drafted, I'm going to read this, "The outdoor display of retail merchandise along public streets and sidewalks." Inside the sponge exchange...
I'm sorry, are you reading what's already in there or what's being proposed?
Yes. Well, it's, it's already in there and it's... Well, it's already in there and it's staying in there.
Okay.
Yes, I just want to clarify, because there's been a lot of talk back and forth about inside the sponge exchange. Inside the sponge exchange is like a mall. We don't, we're not controlling what is going on inside the sponge exchange with this ordinance. Now, unless the city attorney says that this is not written for that purpose, but that's exactly why that is, because it gives confusion, I've been talking to people, and so I just want this addressed head-on, that the way that this is written, it does not apply to the outdoor display of merchandise inside the sponge exchange, not along the public street or sidewalk. If you don't like that, we can change it, but that's the way it's drafted.
Thank you. Um, excuse me. Thank you. We're at a point now of discussion for the commission's concern. I guess I'd say that it was always my hope, and somebody said, "We put it off in the rest of that," and I hear about the law and the rest, is that any changes to the ordinance had to go to planning and zoning, which was ample opportunity for individuals to state your case, make your case, to planning and zoning, why you thought this and why you thought that. It didn't make a difference as far as for this body putting it off, because I guess was afraid to make a decision so we could send the planning and zoning. That's what the law says, and there was some concern about trying to be fair to those individuals that had private property, not excluding the sponge exchange, but others that had adequate space and the rest of that, and all of that went to planning and zoning. And all of that now comes back to us. I don't know, in a sense, how much discussion happened last night as it relates to the private property. The assumption is that no one in planning and zoning thought that that was something that should be considered, and whether we will have to consider it at some point in time, if not tonight, that remains to be seen. So we're at a point now of looking at modifying this, we're at a point of saying, you know, there's an ordinance that's in place and we move forward with it. So, that's kind of the gist of what it is. I know, you know, I've been trying not to say some things myself, and I'm still going to try to control myself to a certain extent. When some people come up and start talking about the Constitution and the rest of that, I'm going to control myself, but as we continually move forward, we know the people that are running for office, and whether they just want to be, use this as their campaign platform or not, we'll deal with that as we move forward. But right now, we have something that we need to consider, and that's direction for staff is concerned, how to move forward. So with that, I don't know, do you have any questions? Commissioner Banther?
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who stayed here tonight, though to speak and the planning and zoning for reviewing this last night. And again, before I start, and it has been said before, the more people that can join the merchant association, even if you disagree with some of the things that are said in there, the more the cohesive voice we get before us helps us make better ordinances or changes in this case or what have you. So I do encourage people, whether or not you agree or disagree with certain people in there, they'll get involved and get your voices heard to make sure that your store or your restaurant is heard, and we get the more, one voice before us. Looking at these changes and going back to the last commission meeting and what I've heard before us here with planning and zoning, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but really, the only area that I would even kind of entertain these changes would be number three in regards to private property. That is something that is very important to me, I'm not sure if we can pull that out, how that would work, but I would be in favor of allowing these changes on private property, if that's possible, but as far as the public sidewalk goes, after listening to everything and your comments and planning and zoning, I think that the ordinance should stay, you know, as is. Thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
Thank you. I'd also like to thank everyone for being here, and also, as Commissioner Banther said, I'd like to thank the Planning and Zoning Board for the time that they put into this as well. I know a great deal of discussion went into this issue last night. I'm at a point where we've got an ordinance that's already been approved, Planning and Zoning Board looked at it, they believe that it should stay the same as it is right now, and that's where I am at this point as well. I believe the ordinance does not need to be changed at this point in time. If, and I can kind of go along with Commissioner Banther on this, if any change were to be made, it would really only be in regards to the private property, which is that third issue. I could see potentially making a change there. Other than that, I think the rest of the ordinance needs to stay the way it is at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Starbend?
Thank you. As always, appreciate everybody being here. For me, I think the discussion tonight has gotten a little convoluted from where it really needs to be. It's not, you know, a matter of what one person sells and the other person sells, and you'll never hear me tell you how to run your business, ever. It's really about private property versus public property, and the rights that are associated with private property, and the privilege that you have with the public property in terms of outdoor display. Mr. Beliris talked about revitalization in a sense, I think, and I think that that's something that's very wise, and he always speaks very wisely. That's really how I'm looking at it tonight. Moving forward, what is the best thing as a whole for this town and the revitalization of the sponge docks and moving forward and getting our Mickey Mouse back? And I think, I think the 36 inches is adequate. I mean, it certainly started, the outdoor displays started with displaying sponges and started with displaying maritime goods, and then over the years, we kind of, we kind of lost that. So I think, as I said last time, that when you take some of the racks away from the buildings and when you drive down the sponge docks in Dotacanis Boulevard in the morning before the businesses are open and you see the beautiful facades, you don't see the racks, and it gives us an opportunity to see the beauty of the buildings. I mentioned last time that it's a privilege versus a right, and it certainly is that, without a doubt, because you're impeding in public property. Without a doubt, I think that, that number three, I can 100% go along with number three. I don't see how constitutionally, if we want to talk about the Constitution, you can tell someone that they don't have a right to use their private property, so I would 100% like to see that incorporated into whatever we decide tonight. And those essentially are basically in my comments. Thank you.
Well, as we look to move forward, there's one of really trying to get a motion to look at, but it's ironic, and like I said when we started, I really don't have a problem in making some concessions for people with private property, but when we set up here, we always tell people what to do with their property, period. Every time we talk about zoning, we tell people what to do with their property. So it's like, to say that we don't is to say that, hey, we don't take care of any kind of buildings up here. But I don't have a concern, well, I don't have that big of concern as it relates to individuals and their property as it relates to what they might do versus the public sidewalks. But we're still at a point of, if there is no motion, then we're basically saying that it's moving ahead with what we have. So that's to my colleagues in terms of-
Can I say something about number three before you get to the motions and stuff?
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure, since I've been deemed the writer of this thing and-
You definitely have.
Which, again, that was an area I looked, but I want to explain one thing on it, and again, looking down there, that is the one point, again, I'm glad you're standing at the 36 inches, pretty much it seems like, because, again, I'd have none, but 36 is fine, and, you know, I don't like the racks, but again, I put that in there for the compromise. Gets down to displays, I just want to make on the private property, a lot of, over the 20 years, why I haven't liked them is, again, and it's important by the definition that Renee read to you, and you had people talking about sponge exchange, and people talking about his hardware, wherever's got this stuff, I don't see any of that stuff that abuts the public sidewalk. I mean, you want to measure how far that stuff on outside their place is on there, this is abutting public sidewalks. And so, the one thing I want to make, though, the 66 in that one, in number three, coincided with what you were going to do, and if you keep, if you keep a 36 up there, I just think in fundamental fairness, it should be 36, even on the private property, because I just think, you know, allowing those racks, I think it matters. The only reason I put 66 is because we were looking at in two going up to 66. Otherwise, that had been written with the existing. So that's one thing to consider where you do that, if you want to give them the added height that the other ones aren't getting, or in fundamental fairness, because you are giving them the porch area, but they need to remain in that lower thing, not hiding the buildings and things that the other things do. So that's just a note, that 66 was put in to coincide with that, since two's not going, I don't see it being fair going into there with there. And I know a lot of consideration last night came up with the separation, but I think that's the important thing of the, you know, not liking the rails or the walls, or whatever you want to call it that separates, but I think that's the important distinction of being able to use your public properties, that you've got that separation from anything, rolling into the sidewalk, doing things, I think that separates and is important, and despite the fact some say we don't like the look or that, you know, I looked at some things down there that inspects, the one with the columns and everything else that you see, you know, looks very nice. It's a separation that separates it from, and that's the one thing, doing this on private property, I think it's just important you have that separation from the public sidewalk, and then those people don't use any of the, they don't use any of the public sidewalk for any of their displays, it's all on their, all on their property, and there's at least a separation from their racks or whatever they have there from that public sidewalk. So I think that separation is important, and again, I would really consider the same height as you were imposing on the rest of the docks, and again, that's my point from the one who wrote this thing, if you go with it on that area and stuff, it's fairness. The sponge exchange is not abut a public sidewalk. It's very clear what Renee read, that the sponge exchange does not, does not fit in what this was to do.
Mr. Hoolis, we understand what your contentions are, but if you are able to make your comments from there, then everybody else should be able to just holler whatever they want to. We understand what you're saying, and all of us up here know what's in front of us, so.
So that's just points I want to make on this number three that we wrote.
Mr. Mayor?
So, yes, sir. I mean, I would motion to, you know, I'm not sure how to word it properly, maybe someone can help with that, but to move forward with the change only in number three as it is written.
I'll second that.
Whoa. I'm going to stop us there. I'm going to want some clarification as to what you're intending, Commissioner, if you don't mind. If you're, you got a first reading of the ordinance on your plate tonight, so if you're motioning that the ordinance be approved with some amendments to it, that's okay, that can be done. I may have misheard you, but are you requesting additional staff action on this?
Well, I would assume we'd go, I mean, correct from wrong, would it go to second reading? I mean-
Well, you've got-
I'd want it to be cleaned up, you know, I don't like-
Can I paraphrase what I think you're asking for, Mr. Banther?
Yes.
The, in number two, we would keep the 36-inch height limit?
Correct.
So those changes would not take place. In number three, you would keep it as is, and you would keep the 66-inch height limit?
Correct, yeah, I just, I mean, if we're going to go down the sort of private property, I'm not going to start tearing apart number three as well, that's just my personal opinion.
Okay.
That was my understanding when I seconded the motion for clarification.
Okay, that's what I understood as well.
But I would assume, correct from wrong, the Mr. Attorney, that it would go to second reading, it's not just a change tonight, unless I'm mistaken.
Ugh.
Would it be safe to go to second reading?
Well, that's a, that's a fairly large change in the ordinance, I mean, that's-
We do need to do an additional first reading on-
I mean, do you want to defer action on first reading to the next meeting and bring back the change?
I think with the change at large, that is the prudent course of action, I do.
I'd rather be safe than sorry, so.
Yeah.
Okay. So you would defer action tonight, the actual action on first reading, to the next meeting in December, or the first meeting in December for first reading?
Or we just bring back a new, a new adaptation to ordinance with those changes there?
Yeah, again, procedurally, that sounds like an instruction to staff to amend the ordinance as motion, which is fine, but I just want to make sure that we're, you know, we have a first reading of an ordinance here, and it sounds like we don't want to move forward with that, because we want additional changes.
And let me ask one more, one more question. Do you think these changes are significant enough that this needs to go back to Planning and Zoning Board? If so, then we got to re-advertise and do everything over again.
No, no, what are the-
I don't feel like that we're, that it's that significant, frankly, I think they've-
Well-
But you're the attorney, so-
Being one of the agree, I'm okay with that. I think that, I think that the Planning and Zoning Board has adequately expressed with appropriate input on all these items-
Right, okay.
-their direction.
I just wanted to make sure that that didn't get brought up later.
I have a question for the city attorney, if I could?
My question, and I guess this goes to the city attorney, my question is, I'm not understanding why we wouldn't be able to vote on this now. I mean, this was, this was on the agenda-
Right.
-in the background, we had what the changes would be. The motion, that I'm not sure that I'm in support of anyway, but there was a motion made, and there was a second made to the motion, was to adopt one of the changes that was in the backup. I'm not sure what would be the, I'm not sure what the issue would be and why we wouldn't be able to vote on this.
Okay, and that's a good point, I appreciate you bringing that up. There are other changes in the ordinance that were not addressed in the motion. For example-
He's choosing not to include those changes. So the ordinance is staying the same, other than adding number three, which is the only thing that Commissioner Banther-
Okay, so all the rest of the terms is-
And again, I'm sorry, I got to clarify too, because there are, in number two, there was, there's clarifying language, you know, I think what you really intended in number two is to keep the height, keep everything except the height limit being 36 inches.
Correct, there's no, yeah, I don't-
So we're adopting everything, then number two, 30, is going back to 36 inches, keeping the other strike that it underlines in number two, because those are applicable to-
So the 66-inch underline is stricken?
Which would be stricken, and then, and then number three, so that's really the only change that you're talking about in essence.
Yes, number three, just that's it, nothing else, and not tearing apart, number three to change numbers in there, just purely number three, that's it.
Adopting it with that one, one change.
Excising 33, excising 3 is fine.
Is that what everybody's understanding? Everyone's nodding.
So you're saying that basically, they still have to have a minimum enclosure?
Everything on number three is applicable, yes.
And they will be able to have 66 on their property?
Yes.
And, but everybody else?
On public, on public property. 36.
Okay, now, I have a legal question here, because I don't understand this. The whole point of number three has to do with private property that encroaches near public sidewalk, is that correct? So that has, that's limiting language, otherwise, number three extends to all private property
It applies to private property that is clearly visible from the public streets and right of way.
Okay, I think that needs to be more specifically stated.
That would be a commission decision, whether they want that more specifically stated.
I mean, I would defer to our attorney on the legalese of it, but I'm comfortable with as now number three states, if, you know, when we mentioned the example of the sponge exchange, how that's not even an issue here, because this is stuff that's coming up against a public sidewalk, that's the whole debate here. But I'm not an attorney, so.
I think, I think changes that you've made through your motion clarified are okay to vote on.
Okay, all right.
Whether they pass or not, notwithstanding.
Would you, just for the record, read what it says in number three there?
The entire number three?
Yes. That's what we're talking about.
Well, I can't, you can't pull it out separately, because you have the beginning of the definition, and then, "These are three qualifying things." So, but what it says, "The displays that are located entirely on private property and under or within a roofed porch area with a minimum enclosure height of 36 inches may display merchandise on racks up to 66 inches in height, with no restriction on placement as long as the displays do not impede or obstruct accessibility." as long as the displays do not impede or obstruct accessibility. Acceptable examples of porches are shown in figure one below. Additional display on the public right-of-way or sidewalk shall not be allowed. Displays on private property that are not within or under an acceptable porch enclosure shall comply with the display limitations in number two above."
Okay. Now, somebody just explained to me, you know, how we take number two out?
We're not taking number two out.
So number two is still in?
The only thing that's changing in number two is the height of this display is going from, from the proposed sixty-six inches back to thirty-six inches.
Staying where it is.
So it will stay where it is?
Correct.
That's why we're only addressing number three.
Correct. So, the, the one thing that, if this attorney agrees, that I think I would like to add, is at the very beginning, on the, on the definition, outdoor display of merchandise, the outdoor display of retail merchandise, and I would like to insert the word "visible" along public streets and sidewalks. I think that's a clarifying point for the future, that addresses, more clearly addresses inside the Sponge Exchange, or other similar situations that might arise. Does that seem...
Yes.
Okay.
So, are you comfortable, because if not, I would ask that we would just defer, so he can look at the language that was proposed?
I think I understand the language that's being proposed, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that, I think I understand what, what Ms. Vincent is saying, I think I understand Commissioner Banther's motion all the way through, and if those, if that is the motion and the changes...
I'm clear.
I would ask you, Commissioner Banther, to also include Ms. Vincent's additional wording in your, in your motion.
I would include that additional wording, yes, in my motion, about visible merchandise.
I'll resecond it.
With that, if you have it?
I think so. Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
No.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. With that, we'll, with item, Mr. Lane's item, item number fourteen, appointment, reappointment to Tarpon Springs Team Council, just a note that one of the applicants, Mr. Fiddler, did not complete the process, so is really not eligible for selection, which means that we have to reappoint Ms. Kayla Cruz, Ms. Ronaldo, determined to expire August thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, upon graduation, and then appoint three individuals, which is what we have, and one person for his, we only have one applicant for his ex officio, so... If we can...
I'd, I'd motion, since I'm motioning this evening, I guess, I'll, I'll motion to, I guess it's everybody, right, correct, because we have to exclude the three applicants in number two, and the ex officio in number three, if I'm reading that correctly?
Right, right, we would reappoint those two, and then appoint the other three people excluding Mr. Fiddler?
Correct, yes.
To those, and then Ms. Melton to be the ex officio.
Yes, that would, that would be my, 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 my motion, yes.
Second.
Got that roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Discussion board members that have not completed the swearing-in, public records and ethics training process.
Obviously, we've gone through a process to get the individuals on boards to comply with this. I'm trying to look where Irene gave me the cheat sheet, though. Let me run down what we've done so far. In July fifteenth, we invited the eighty people on boards and committees to come to our presentation on July twenty-third. Obviously, we made a tape available for those who couldn't come to watch it, sign an affidavit and get the oath, so, those who didn't come July twenty-third, she next sent out a letter August twelfth, that went out to those to attend to get that done. October thirty-first, a second notice reminder letter went out, giving them until November thirtieth, the deadline to do this. November fifth, affidavits were sent to those who attended the presentation, took oath, there were some of them who wasn't there, they did that, so, at this time, and again, remember, we still have to November thirtieth, but at this time, we still have thirty of the eighty who have not complied since July twenty-third. So, what I want to discuss with the board, there needs to be some finality in this thing. Obviously, I really don't want to disrupt boards in, in December, but if I was asked for recommendation, I think we need to firmly have the next letter come from me, or if you want it to come from whoever it comes from, I don't mind being the bad guy on boards again, under your direction, but I think the next one comes to them, needs to say that if they don't get this done, then my suggestion was that I'd bring those people back to the first meeting in January, and we would place people on the board who would get that done. Obviously, we've been going since July twenty-third, just to watch the Sunshine Law presentation and the other facts that is essential to a board, sign an affidavit, they watched it and take the oath, and we have still got thirty board members from July twenty-third who have not done that, I think, on January second, third, whatever our first meeting is, but again, that's up to you, they're your board, so, but I think we need to send the definitive things where we go for replacements for those people who just, for whatever reason, refuse to comply with this.
Just for clarification, out of the thirty, I think we had sixteen that have not completed neither, we have some that have just sent, we have, I believe, ten?
Nine.
Nine that still need the affidavit?
And five that just made the oath.
Five need to come in to get the oath.
Okay, um, what, what, what method are we using for them doing the...
Watching the video?
Do we have the video that we're giving to them?
It's on our...
Or they got to come in?
It's on our website.
So all that to do is just basically go to the website, I mean...
And they, they were sent the letter with the affidavit stating that they watched the website, if they couldn't attend, which they didn't, and once they view it, they just sign and return the affidavit, and call and schedule the, so they can get the oath. The other day, I even had someone who came and did the oath through the drive-through window, so however we can get the oath, which was a first for me, that was a first for me, but, you know, and I don't mind going to the board meetings at whatever time they are, but the problem was when I would show up, the same people that were required, that needed it, weren't there, so, or there that night, so that was the problem, that's why we had them called, so we can schedule with me, you know, whatever time it was, whether it's after hours, or however they needed to be sworn in.
Oh, my, you know, I, I have no problem with us moving ahead, I don't, have we sent any of those certified?
None of them have been sent certified yet, you know, because there's a cost.
I would think if, if we're going to move to that point of some finality, that we would look at sending those letters.
I would agree that my letter, or Irene's, if you don't want, I'll write it nice, I promise. I will write it north.
Whatever it takes to get them to comply.
Whoever you want to write, I do think this one announcing, the ones who don't comply with our last November thirtieth deadline, that we do send certified to them, and I, I agree with that.
Do we let them know, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt, do we let them know how easy it is to come in and get sworn in, like, when we're notifying them, like, you can come to the clerk's office and be sworn? Is there, are they aware of that?
Well, that's where we, that's where we tell them the letter, they contact me and come in, so we can schedule an appointment to come in.
All right.
And even through the drive-throughs?
I just didn't know if they were thinking like that.
And, and some come, some have come in and taken the oath, but then they don't have their affidavit, they say they're going to return it, but they have not, so, like I said, it's a combination, it's not all, I mean, that we have sixteen, like I said, that have, have not done neither, but just have not called or anything.
Send them the letter. Yes, sir. I'm, I'm fine with sending some kind of letter and getting some kind of finality, I'm just curious, has anyone expressed any kind of reason, or like, like, is there any negative, I don't know, they don't want to watch the video, or they are concerned, I mean, I'm just, has there been any negative response?
No, the only, the only confusion that we had, and I think that's been clarified, is, and that's, you know, our fault not thinking at the time, so it could be fair across the board, we thought when we had the original presentation, that everyone would show, you know, the majority would show up, we, I mean, at the time, we only had, I think it was like twenty-nine or thirty people out of the eighty that showed up. When we had them coming in, we figured, how is there a way we can have them sign and take an oath all at one time, so when, as they were coming in, they were signing the oath, but then, there was nothing saying that they, you know, they actually were here for the, so we had to send them an affidavit, so there was a little confusion on that part, but we handled that, that was only a handful that didn't get to sign that, but no other mention on any of the remainder.
So it's just lack of follow-through?
So, I guess you have the ready?
We'll work on it together.
We'll work on it together, we'll sign it together.
I'll make sure he's nice.
Yeah, all right.
Whatever it takes to get it done, you know? Um, I think that's... That's, concludes our regular session meeting, and we'll adjourn that at nine fifty. And we'll go to our CRA meeting, a noun called order, the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and thirteenth, at nine fifty-two. Roll call?
Chair Archie?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Slattery is absent and excused.
Um, we'll now go to public comments, the items that will not be discussed this evening, Not, I'll, only item is item number one, discussion draft ground lease option to purchase agreement for one forty-four East Tarpon Avenue.
Thank you. As you know, we've been negotiating for the past several months with the developer for the redevelopment of the Tarpon Avenue property, one forty-four East Tarpon Avenue, the old former Forbes property, and we, we've gotten to the point now where we're just about, we're close to finalizing the agreement, we thought it would be a good idea to bring forward to what we have, so that we can update you on the progress, and gain a consensus, or find out from you if there's any concerns that you have with what we've done so far, so that we can take that back to the developer sooner, rather than, than later. And just, it's been several months, so just as you remember what the project is, the developer's proposing to build a two-story mixed-use building that would front Tarpon Avenue and Court Street, taking advantage of the smart code regulations. The mixed-use aspect is, the first floor would be retail, commercial, second floor, residential, they're talking about eight, or potentially ten apartments on the second floor. As we've been working through the negotiations, there's a couple things that we've kept in mind, number one is the, providing some reasonable assurances to the city, that if we sell the property, that it will be developed, I know that's come up several times with some other projects, that if we sell it, how can we make sure, provide some reasonable assurances that developer will follow through, and, and the project doesn't somehow fall apart. And secondly, balancing the costs with the potential long-term revenues that the city will achieve through the project. So, you'll see in your backup, we've provided a summary of the agreement to date, you'll notice it's a ground lease with an option to purchase, and the reason we did that instead of a standard purchase contract, is to provide those reasonable assurances. So through the ground lease, what we've done, and, and the developers agreed to it, that we would have a two-year ground lease with the option to purchase, and anytime within that two years, developer, at the time that he constructs at least the shell of the building, that would be the trigger point, then, that we would go ahead and exercise the option with the developer. The shell of the building, we're working on the terminology of that, I've, I've got that in here, it's basically the structural components that completely enclose a building, including but not limited to the foundation, structural frame, floor slabs, exterior walls, and roof system. So, you know, it's, our thought that that would ensure that the project is well enough underway, that there'd be a reasonable assurance to sell the property at that point, the developer would finish the project as, as outlined. The terms of the option, as you can see, there's an option price, which would be a nominal charge of ten dollars, and then the other additional incentive is, there's development fees and some related building fees, that we're proposing that the city would pay those fees, and then would be, would reimburse basically ourselves over time upon the completion of the project, when it comes online, with the property tax revenues that are generated I've also included in here for you a project impact, as I said, the, the second parameter that we were keeping in mind as we were doing the negotiations, was to balance what the costs are to the city, which is basically the purchase price and the development terms with the long-term revenues that the city is going to be generating from this project. Essentially, using a construction cost estimate of approximately three million, the city would be getting nearly seventeen thousand a year in property tax revenues, and then associated utility fees and franchise fees, which is a conservative estimate, because it doesn't include gas, but that would be an additional about four thousand a year, so you're talking about twenty thousand dollars a year in additional revenues to the city, in addition to the ripple effects of the new residents who'd be living in the, in the apartments, the buying power that they achieve, obviously the catalyst of a new building in our downtown, I don't know when the last time a new building was built there, but I know it's, must be decades, so, just a signal of a new construction building being built in the downtown, really sends a signal to not only the rest of the community, but the entire area about the viability of our, of our city. So, at this point, there's a couple things that we still are, are working with the developer with, and those are really kind of building-related, this is the, the shell of the financial picture of it, so, you know, we wanted to bring this forward to you, because we are, as I said, close to finalizing the rest of the agreement, and if you have any issues that we could address now, before we move farther, otherwise, we'll probably be ready to bring this forward to you next month, to finalize, and then hopefully get the construction started early next year.
Thank you, let me go, let me, that's the economic development side, let me talk to you, the management side of this thing. Obviously, we need a catalyst, we need a catalyst for what we did with the smart code, we need the catalyst for livable, walkable community, especially in the downtown, the Safford corridor, there's a tremendous amount of areas along that whole downtown Safford corridor, that could spring up with business downstairs, apartments upstairs, and, and move along with everything we've been doing with the smart code and stuff. Most of you know fiscal conservative me, I don't like giving anything, and some might say, well, here you are, not only giving the property that had cost to it, but you're given, you know, the impact fees and stuff up to sixty-five thousand, but the investment to have that catalyst, and especially if you talk to the people in the downtown, you talk to the property owners, you talk to the people, the importance of that, and I use the analogy, we looked at all the options, we looked at giving it to developers, and Karen Head developers, tell her, you can give it to me, and I can't make the numbers work and do it, so, you can hand the property to me, and I can't do nothing. We tried to put it out to bid for somebody to take it, we had no takers there, so, in my mind, the analogy I tell people, why are you doing that, is, do you want a building and a possible catalyst there, or do you want a cat litter box for ten years? Because I don't know if you're going to get anything there if you don't do this, and I think this is of such vitality that the downtown to do, you got to realize, this developer is... developer is taking a risk. There are risks, and there are as many risks or more risks on his side than on our side. He's got to get it built, he's got to get it filled, he's got to get his money back with a substantial investment. So in the risk option, I say as a city, we're on the far less a risk than the developer has in doing this, especially when you've got almost everybody else telling you, we can't touch that down there. Hopefully also can be a catalyst to the other buildings down there to take advantage of facade grants, to make improvements. And it just has the possibility of getting that building with livable upstairs, some good, hopefully, businesses that attract people to downtown, on the court and on the Tarpon Avenue side, is just too, as vital a project as we have. And the reason why we're willing to negotiate in this fashion is that that's the way to get it done the fastest, the quickest. And I think it's very little cost for the potential that it has for the downtown. And I think everybody I've talked to in that area and stuff are behind it and, and agree with that. So that's why these terms, and hopefully, again, we've got a few minor things on some language. I'm hoping as soon as we can get those little language things and some research on some different things with permitting and stuff and get that done, hopefully by the first meeting in December, the latest, the second one, that we bring that final contract. But we did want to bring these terms to you first in case there's some, we need to talk some things out about what we've done so far. The other things are very minor that, you know, really in the scheme of things, don't make much difference, so.
Oh, thank you all. You know, it's, it's a lot to actually, to digest in relationship to moving ahead and just to look, you're looking for our lesson in a sense of...
No, we just want to, if there's any, we want to talk out any concerns or issue we like to talk about now before we bring the contract back for the actual approval of the contract, or if we need to go back and get you some information that we can do that for you before we actually bring the contract to you.
Well, one of the things that I guess, if I'm looking at this, that I'm concerned about the financial viability of whomever this developer is to do what they say they're going to do. I know that it's still in our hands as far as, you know, if they don't complete, you know, they've got a shell, you know. Worst-case scenario, you know, is that part of a partial completed building. So, you know, whatever that's going to be brought, you know, is trying to figure out what is, you know, their capacity to complete the project. So that's, that's one of the things that I would be very concerned about. I understand where the city manager's at for as looking at some type of catalyst for downtown. I think all of us, hopefully, would agree that it, it needs something to stimulate some additional things to happen within that area. So, but that's one of the parts that I'm very concerned about because we talked about giving it away is, in a sense, when everything is said and done, we're doing it based upon the return. So I would like to know their capacity to be able to, to deliver.
So you, you mean more, more information from the developer on his, and their financial wherewithal to be able to do the project?
The same information, what made us comfortable with them. We need to, we'll get into the commission, make them comfortable, especially, we've got somebody with a track record and a track record of success. So I think we, we need to get that information to them to show that we do have a person with a track record of success and following through in many different cities. In fact, he's gained extra projects. We're glad he didn't put us in the wayside while he got some other ones in other cities. But we'd be glad to get that for him. And I think that will give you a comfort level. It gave me a comfort level, and I don't get a comfort level easy, but I've got one. So I think that information will, will get you a little better comfort level.
Commissioner Lawson?
Thank you. It is a lot to take in. As, as the mayor said, we're not just giving it away. We're, when you factor in the development, other related permit fees, we're paying them to take it essentially. So it, that, you know, gives me a lot of pause as I look at this. One thing I want to understand is, is kind of the worst-case scenario, and I, I understand we're going to get a better look at their financials to, to make sure everything is going to be fine. But worst-case scenario is what? Walk me through the worst-case scenario. They, they begin construction and what, what's our worst-case scenario?
They begin construction, we, they get the shell complete. We all agree that the definition of the shell is what it is, and we exercise the option and, and the developer takes ownership of it. And then if something falls apart in the economy and you can't complete it, I think the worst-case scenario would sit there until they're able to complete the project again.
And they would own it at that point, you know.
But again, do the shells of substantial financial interest within.
Right.
My worst-case scenario, which is not worst-case, they get half or 75% of the shell done and walk away. But then what we do, it reverses back to us, and then Karen's got a, not only a piece of property, but a piece of property with a partial shell ready for somebody to come in and develop.
Yeah, and I think before we would, we would go through the exercise of the option, we'd be very diligent in terms of making sure that the shell is what it is, probably taking a look, another look at their financials, having discussions with them about where they are with the rest of the project, and, and having a timeline in place at that point.
I guess my question, and I'm, I'm just asking, I'm just discussing, but the, the $10 price is obviously very fair on our end. And to pay the $65,000 of permit fees and so forth, I think again is very fair. I'm wondering if instead of the shell needing to be completed, what, what if the entire building had to be completed prior, prior to them taking ownership? Is, is that something that was discussed at all, or could it be?
Yeah, and, and the reason we, we didn't do that is because the, the developer needs to own the property to get the complete financing that's required. And so that's why we went to this two-year lease rather than just an outright contract for sale, which was, you know, initially what was discussed. But to take ownership of the property and to build it, they need to own it at some point. So we, we try to reach a compromise to how far is, how far they would be willing to go with the construction without having that assurance of owning the property.
To go along with what Commissioner Lawson is talking about, what's the possibility of, you know, they get the property, but it doesn't get completed, you know, and it reverts back to us? And I'm saying that, you know, I, I guess the worst, what I think about the worst case is that it goes to them, they don't do it, but they still own it.
They've got the land in.
And they decide at that point that they might sell it. And we're kind of sitting there looking like, you know, I mean, so I, I don't know. I'm just saying, you know.
They could sell it to somebody who can finish it. I mean, that could be an option, that maybe they're not able to do it, but they sell it to other investors who will finish it. But I guess the other flip side of that is a discussion with Attorney Metz, if there's any ability, once you sell it, to have a clawback clause in it. I don't know that there is, because that's why we went to this lease agreement option rather than the outright sale, because we had that same discussion. If we sell it and they can't do it, how can we get it back? So that's how we reached this ground lease. But I, I mean, we can discuss it further with him, but there is the option of a developer who can't finish a project, something happens per se, that would be something happening to him as a company, that, that they fall apart, not the economy, because that's a different story. But selling it to somebody else who can finish it, I mean, that, that would be something in the realm of a possibility as well.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, you know, it's...
No, no, you're, you're asking the same questions I'm thinking about. Thank you.
Commissioner... I'll just, I mean, I think it's a business transaction that, yes, does have some inherent risk, but from what I've been told by the city manager and everyone else is that this is as a reliable builder as we're going to get. And that there's been builders that even if we took off the $10 and said free to that, they wouldn't take it. So, you know, yes, we certainly should do our due diligence and see their finances. Everything that the city staff has seen, we of course should see to be, to be reassured. But if they're the best that we can get, and, and again, the one thing that I think at least sold me back in May when they met with us is their proven track record here. We're not just somebody coming in last night and set up shop and, oh, we're going to buy a piece of your property downtown, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, after we see that information of their viability, you know, as long as that's up to par, you know, it, it would sit well with me just knowing in, in business in general, unless we do conduct business, there is inherent risk. But I think it's as, I would say as minimized as it's going to be with this developer. I mean, unless, something I'm, I'm unaware of. So yes, there, there is, there is risk involved, but that's just part of, part of doing business. As long as we do our due diligence and making sure they're qualified, which we have, and we see that, then I think we're in good shape.
Commissioner Penny?
Thank you. I concur with Commissioner Banther. I mean, it's definitely a business transaction. I mean, there's always going to be, you know, risk within business, and it's certainly our responsibility to minimize that risk as much as possible. To me, the worst-case scenario is for, for the, for the property to continue to sit as it is, and we don't collect a dime worth of ad valorem revenue off of it, and five years down the road, we're kicking ourselves in the butt because, you know, we overthought this and we, and we didn't do something. You know, you have to remember that even if, as soon as that shell goes up, or as soon as any, any improvements are done to the property, the ad valorem property value will go up, and we'll start from day one collecting revenue off that. So with the calculations that Ms. Lemons put together for us, in year three, that $65,000 worth of credits that we're giving to the, to the builder has paid off. So, you know, if you're looking at that as a return on investment, that's like a 33% return. If somebody gave me a 30%, 33% return, I'd take it right now. I mean, you know, knowing, knowing the developer, I know that he has ongoing projects within the City of Tarpon Springs, which to me means that he's already invested. You know, it's not, he's done projects here, done projects there, done projects there. I mean, he's got projects going on within the city right now. So to me, that's, that's clout. And I look forward to coming back and, and seeing it go vertical and have a nice ribbon cutting there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know there's any ironclad, you know, guarantee that everything's going to go smoothly. It's just, we do our homework, we do, put the best agreement that we can together, knowing the financials, knowing, you know, I, I think short of the economy completely collapsing, that, you know, we've got a good agreement here and a good project.
Well, you know, for me, it's about the financials. It's still about, you know, whatever we can put together to make sure that projects not completed, that, that we're protected. Yeah, I understand risk, investment, and the rest of that. I understand too, that we are held to a greater responsibility, simply because, you know, whatever we are talking about is not our own. Whatever we're talking about is people that have entrusted some things to us. So we have a stewardship, and that's what I'm looking at, is in relationship to what might happen. I mean, if nothing happens in five years, one thing is that I won't be here to have it, tell me about it. But if we give this, if we do this, and something don't happen, I guess people will remember who was up here. So I, I am, I'm, I'm concerned about that. I think that you brought up something that I can look at, hey, let's move forward, let's try to do, still do our due diligence. You know, I, I haven't had a chance to, to talk with our attorney in terms of, Mr. Metz in terms of how you're crafting. I understand that y'all have been doing some things, and that's why the lease is there. It's just trying to get that, that comfort level and that warm fuzzy feeling that I assume that you have now and city manager has, you know. So I, I assume that we're saying to them, move forward, bring us back something that we can look at, and hopefully we'll meet everybody's approval.
Okay.
So with that, we'll go to any public comment. And while we're having that, do we need a motion on this here?
The agenda says discussion draft ground lease option to purchase agreement. I didn't see any draft of a ground lease to review, to discuss. So that alone is an issue. Everybody's talking about, oh, well, you know, the reliability of this particular person. Who's Nick Jay Properties? Just out here in the public, it's just another corporate entity. There's a lot of pitfalls to this. One, option price $10 to tie up a property for two years. Basically, by this, they could actually sit and do nothing for two years. Says two years from commencement date of the lease, the signing, 10x and makes, so for two years, they can tie it up for $10. Plenty of things. They can build part of the shell, and they don't exercise the option and walk away. Who's going to get rid of the, who's going to pay for the demolition of an unfinished structure there? If that's not what the next person wants. Don't be fooled by the economic development stats here. Those will occur no matter who purchased the property. You may get it a little sooner if someone does it now as compared to a few years from now. But this, these stats aren't specific just to this particular developer. We've envisioned this area, we've talked about it, lower retail, second-floor office, third residential. In fact, I'm surprised I didn't even hear that aspect of any offices in there in the middle. So there will be these returns whenever it's done. What's the option price that they're going to purchase it at? I mean, that's a huge part of an option contract. What are we selling it for? And in the timeline here, this is an abbreviated timeline. I don't see anything before March 2012 of all the expenses the city had to put out for attorney fees, filings, we had to go to court to get an injunction to go inspect the building. Am I correct on that, Mark? The demolition costs, all those costs, and I have no idea, and do y'all have any idea how much it is? And y'all sold the property to the CRA for $10. That was a little shift there of property where the city didn't get the money back. They got $10 for all those expenses. So this needs to be more out in the open instead of being the last thing on an item after everybody's left, and more information for us to view. Thank you.
My assumption is that we still are saying move forward and, you know, so, you know, there, there are some things that, you know, I think all of us would like to see. You know, community development, agency meetings normally last. Nobody's saying, hey, can't stay around to, to be a part of it. So I don't know if you have anything else, Ms. Lemon?
Well, like I say, we'll just, we'll, we'll bring back, you know, more definitive, again, this, tonight was a discussion, just to give you some of the parameters. So we knew we were on the right track of moving forward with it. Again, every project has risks. Our biggest risk is, I think was echoed today, of doing nothing. Our biggest risk is, I think was echoed today, of doing nothing. And we always like to use this but-for analogy. But for things that a city can contribute, a project would not take place. And in this case, I think the but-for test is appropriate because of the fact that we have had an empty vacant lot there sitting for quite some time. It was a building that unfortunately had to be razed, and the city had to incur those costs. And those are the costs of, those are the costs of development, and those are costs that everybody incurs. But it's costing us more by doing nothing. We're losing the property taxes every year, the revitalization aspect of a new building coming up downtown, the jobs, you know, far outweighs a risk of sitting back and doing nothing. So I look forward to bringing something back to you with more definitive answers for you in terms of the wherewithal, the developer, the entire package that you can take a look at, and hopefully we'll be able to have a successful project that will bring some rebirth to the downtown.
And in management terms from somebody who you know is not a big risk-taker, this thing has the potential of, no matter if we spend $120,000 or $150,000 or whatever it is, and we're giving it away, and we're paying the impact fees and everything, this thing has the potential to return 10, 20, 30 times the value of what we're investing. It has the potential, and that's where you're willing to take the risk, because what could spring up from that, what could be gained from down there and stuff? It has a potential for an outstanding gain, and that's why, in this case, you even see me out there taking a risk like this on there to convince. So that's the option to, that's the option to look at when we get the contract and go. That'll be the option to go, so.
And for me, I'm not as concerned about the money that we spent. We spent that money not because of wanting to do some things for redevelopment ourselves. We spent that money because it was necessary to take the building down, to do those type of things that we needed to do, and a lot of it's for public safety. So that's just was the cost of doing business at that point in time and what the city needed to do, not investing in the property so that we could recoup. But we just had that as something that was kind of dealt to us because of the condition of the building, so. But if there's no other comments, we'll conclude the CRA agenda and go to staff comments. And thank you, Ms. Lemon.
No comments, Mayor.
Mr. Attorney?
No comments.
Madam Clerk?
Just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
I forgot you, the city manager.
Voice is gone, I'm done.
Commissioner Tarapany?
No comments, Mayor.
Commissioner Banther?
I just look forward to being with Vice Mayor Slattery in New York next week for the band. And I'm going to try and get a decent place to watch them. I'm not very savvy with the streets in New York, but I'm at least going to be at their Thanksgiving dinner. I know Vice Mayor Slattery is as well, so we look forward to representing you all there and giving them, I think she has a plaque for them, from what I know, so.
Commissioner Lawson? No comments.
On that note, you know, my thoughts and prayers are with Commissioner Vice Mayor Slattery on her loss, and hopefully that y'all have a good time up in New York. We're definitely proud of our band and what they accomplished, and we know that they're going to represent us well, so. There are no other comments. We will adjourn this meeting at 10:25.